Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of council for the County of Perth held on Thursday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm Deputy Warden Doug Kellum and officially call this meeting to order. I ask the clerk to note our starting time as nine oh three for the minutes. Please note that we do have regrets from Warden Egits and Councillor Acheson this morning. At this time, I ask that you bow your heads for a moment of reflection. Thank you.
We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Anishinaabe, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the culture of the diverse Indigenous Métis and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work.
I'll remind everyone that if you have any pecuniary interests to declare, please do so now or anytime throughout this meeting, if you should, if it should arise. Seeing none. Regarding item five point five, five point one, confirmation of the agenda. I have a motion that reads that January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three agenda be approved, moved by councillor or seconded by councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. We are now, we are now at item six on our agenda. The so-called consent agenda. There was only one item on the consent agenda this morning. Councillors, do you have any questions? Seeing none. I have a motion that council receives consent agenda item six point one and approves the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three council minutes. Moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Trentowski. All those in favor? And that is carried. Public meetings. We do have a planning public meeting to discuss OPA number two twelve and OPA number two one four. For this, we will temporarily recess our regular council meeting. And I have a motion that regular council recess for the purpose of holding the planning public meeting at approximately nine oh six AM. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Kaisenberg. All those in favor? And that is carried. I would like to, I'd like to call this planning meeting to order at nine oh six AM. If anyone has any pecuniary interest to declare, please do so now or anytime throughout the meeting. Seeing none. Confirmation of the agenda. I have a motion that the OPA number two twelve and OPA two one four public meeting, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three agenda be approved. Moved by councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes from public meeting on October sixth, twenty twenty-two. I have a motion that reads as follows. That Perth County Council approves the minutes for the October sixth, twenty twenty-two public meeting and OPA number two oh nine WP twenty-two dash zero one Plan of Subdivision West Mitchell Developments, OPA number two ten and PE twenty-one dash zero one Plan of Subdivision Percon Investments. You have a mover, please? Moved by councillor McDermott, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. Questions or comments? Councillor McDermott?
Um, just one question. Uh, that was uh, from October the sixth, and this is January the twenty-sixth. Um, like it, that seems to be like a long time before we received those minutes.
So through the chair, uh, the reason why we do that is because it falls the same meeting. Uh, so we, we deal with the minutes of the previous meeting type in the next meeting.
Yep, all right. That's fine. It just seemed like it was a long time. That's all.
Any other questions or comments? We have motion on the floor. All those in favor? And that is carried. Item number five. Receiving or reports and receiving comments. Uh, Perth County Official Plan Amendment, two twelve, Susanna Reid. Welcome, Susanna.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Good morning, council. Would you like me to proceed with the presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay. My slides organized here. Okay, I believe you're seeing my presentation now.
Yes.
All right, this is a public meeting for OPA two twelve, which is an amendment, uh, an application for an amendment to the Perth County Official Plan. The owners of the property are Eden Grove Village, Inc., and the applicant is Julian, uh, Von Westerholt, who is a professional planner at MHBC Consulting Planners. The property is um, in the municipality of North Perth, fronting Highway twenty-three between Gallens Town and Palmerston. And it's a hundred and sixty-four acre property. So this is, are you able to see my cursor moving?
Yes, we are.
Okay, super. So this is the property here. Um, it's a, it's a very unique property. This is a very interesting application. Um, the property is um, a hundred and sixty-four acres, as I mentioned, it's between line eighty-nine and line ninety, um, fronting Highway twenty-three. It's um, surrounded by agricultural land, and there are um, a couple of non-agricultural uses across the road. There's a motel um, and an auto dealership, and then uh, two non-agricultural residential uses. So as I mentioned, it's a unique property. It was developed in the early sixties um, as the Midwestern Regional Center. I'm guessing most of council is familiar with this site. Uh, it's a residential, it was uh, developed as a residential facility for people with developmental disabilities. There were more than two hundred people living on the site, and the buildings on the property were built to accommodate this use, including accommodations, cafeterias for both the residents and the staff support, uh, gymnasium, auditorium, a chapel, and a swimming pool. The infrastructure on the site now is uh, about sixty years old. Um, the Midwestern Regional Center was closed in nineteen ninety-eight. There have been two attempts to redevelopment, redevelop the property since, um, sorry, prior to Eden Grove Village, Inc., um, acquiring the site in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and I'll provide this history because it's, it's relevant, uh, um, planning designation and zoning on the property now. So in two thousand and one, the site was acquired by Village Green Lifestyles, um, community, um, proposed to redevelop the site for a hotel and conference center. And there was an official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment for that use. And that, um, that uh, proposal was not successful. Then in two thousand and ten, it was acquired by a Buddhist community in Toronto, um, which is, which is referred to as the Cham Chan Temple. And um, they were proposing a place of worship and retreat center, including short-term overnight accommodation. And they um, also applied for an official plan amendment, and that was approved by County Council in two thousand and eleven. That's OPA two ten, sorry, one ten, one ten. Um, some renovations were made by the Cham Chan Temple for the main hall, but the project was abandoned and then the site fell into disrepair. Um, at which point, um, we, we come up to two thousand and twenty-one, when the property was purchased by Eden Grove Village, Inc., which is a nonprofit organization created for the purpose of developing this property. And this is, um, the photo on the screen now is what the um, the front of the building looks like now. So this is the building facing the highway. Um, so Eden Grove has applied for an official plan amendment uh, for a site-specific agricultural policy in the Perth County Official Plan to permit an extensive redevelopment for a Mennonite community on private services. Um, the mixed-use development proposes housing for seniors, including apartments, living suites, sorry, assisted living suites and a long-term care facility, semi-detached and townhouse dwellings, a community school, community garden, church, office, warehousing, and a commercial, uh, commercial uses, including a restaurant. So it's, it is uh, a very significant development that's proposed in an agricultural community. Um, a, a total of three hundred and twenty residential uses, residential units are proposed for the site. Um, so this is the mapping from the Perth County Official Plan. And you can see that um, there is, uh, this is an agricultural designation where my cursor is now. Um, this is the uh, sewage treatment pond, private sewage treatment pond. And then there is um, a forested area that's designated natural environment. So the special agricultural policy area, um, that is in the designation on the site now was as amended by OPA uh, one ten, uh, to permit the um, Buddhist Retreat Center. The zoning on the site now is an eight dash twenty-seven, and this was not amended um, for the Retreat, Buddhist Retreat Center. So this is the zoning um, that uh, was in place following the acquisition by the Village Green um, Lifestyle Community. So it recognizes uses related to the hotel and conference center. And then the green is the, is a natural environment zone that recognizes the um, forested area on the site. So this is um, a site plan that has been provided by MHBC, the developer's planner. And I've turned it on its side um, to align it, um, you know, with the north-south orientation, um, putting Highway twenty-three on the uh, right-hand side of the screen. So this is the large, um, the buildings, the large campus that are, um, that is on the site. Um, these dotted yellow lines uh, refer to MDS setbacks. So the um, the application proposes that these sites are, remain as open space while they would be within the special agricultural policy area to permit the development. Um, and then you can see the forested area here and the sewage lagoon. So the, I have a number of photos um, to walk here around the property. These photos were taken by myself and Jerika Gilbert, my colleague at Planning Department, um, in December seventh of last year. So standing, the arrow on the right-hand side of the screens shows where the photographer was standing when the picture was taken. So standing further back from the, the front-facing um, part of the main building. Um, and this is looking at the side of the building. So there have been some um, improvements, renovations done to the side of the building. And then you can see that the intention is to use this, this front part of the building for residential suites. This is standing in the middle of the front part of the building where there is a large auditorium. And the intention here, I'm moving you through these photos quickly, um, to give you a sense of the scale of the infrastructure that's on the, on the site now. So this is a chapel that's um, on the site. There is a gymnasium. There is a large institutional kitchen. Um, this, this picture shows um, only a part of it. So the um, institutional uh, kitchen was, is, is substantial, um, adequate to provide food for, um, prepare food for more than two hundred residents and the staff who are supporting them. There are two uh, cafeterias, one for the residents and one for the staff, um, as it was prepared for the, built for the Midwestern Regional Center. Um, and then there are, on the right-hand side of the screen where my cursor is now, you can see that there are two arms where the accommodation um, was for the Midwestern Regional Center, and these are referred to as pods. And, and these um, areas you can see are really in disrepair. Um, the, on the um, the south side, the pods have the, they have been gutted. On the north side, they haven't, um, there hasn't been this type of work. So um, you can see the, the state of this part of the building. Now, standing outside the building, um, the main building, looking um, back, so you can see the scale of the infrastructure on the site. Um, also, uh, another photo showing the scale of the infrastructure. Um, there is a, a road network um, around the property. And there are also some outbuildings, um, where there are water treatment, um, or the water facilities for the site as well as um, uh, areas for maintenance and uh, heating. Um, this is standing behind, um, at the backside of the, the um, buildings, looking towards them. So you can see um, what the outside of the accommodation area looks like. Uh, and then the road out towards the sewage treatment pond. This is standing on the um, the bank of the sewage treatment pond, the berm, um, looking towards a cropped agricultural field. Um, so here there is cropped agricultural land. And this is what the sewage, the private sewage treatment pond looks like. So this was established and constructed in nineteen sixty-three for um, up to five hundred people. Um, the area, the footprint is about nine acres, and with the area including the berm encompasses a larger footprint. And you can see it's at the northwest portion of a part of the property. Um, then this is a, a picture of the, the grassed area showing the woodlot. Okay, so that um, is an overview of what is on the property now. And what I propose to do is walk through the planning issues. And I've divided these into two categories. The higher level consideration where we enter into the planning discussion is what are the policy requirements in the provincial policy statement? As it, as the provincial policy statement inform the planning authorities' consideration of um, the application as uh, submitted by Eden Grove Village. And then I will outline the technical requirements um, for the application as well. So, starting with the planning issues, um, there are three that I have identified. First, uh, protecting agricultural land for agricultural purposes, which is um, a foundational um, policy in the provincial policy statement and the County Official Plan. Second, the minimum distance separation requirements for a, a non-agricultural use in proximity to existing livestock operations. And then third, the provincial policy statement provides direction for considering non-agricultural uses such as this um, development in prime, prime agricultural areas. So I wanted to focus on that policy um, direction as well. So starting with the um, uh, permitted uses in prime agricultural area, just section two, three, three of the provincial policy statement. There are three um, types of uses that are permitted in agricultural areas. First are agricultural uses, that is farms. So livestock uses and um, cropping operations would be are the predominant types of agricultural uses in Perth County. Um, other agricultural uses might be um, vineyards to grow um, grapes for, for wineries. But agricultural uses means producing food. Agricultural-related uses are um, businesses that exist to support farms. So that would be tractor dealerships, uh, feed storage. Um, trucking businesses related to livestock operations. And then finally, on-farm diversified uses. So on-farm diversified uses are accessory businesses um, that are permitted on um, agricultural uses. So first, there's a farm, and then an on-farm diversified use is permitted. In this case, um, the, the proposed use is um, is a residential community. So in my opinion, in the planning department's opinion, the use doesn't satisfy, the proposal doesn't satisfy um, the requirement that it be an agricultural use. And I have a few more slides, two more slides to outline for you the um, the provincial policy framework for agricultural lands in rural areas. So the provincial policy statement defines rural areas. And then there are four types of uses that are permitted in rural areas. So first, prime agricultural land, prime agricultural areas. So this is um, uh, uses that are um, agricultural uses um, on land that is considered uh, class one, two, or three, which is most of Perth County. Um, and then natural environment features, which are woodlots and wetlands. Settlement areas, which are towns and villages um, and built-up areas. And then rural lands, and rural lands are being, are defined as the provincial policy statement as being outside of settlement areas and outside prime agricultural areas. So rural lands by definition are outside of prime agricultural areas. So here is um, a, a schematic that I've put together in order to explain um, a rural area in Perth County versus a rural area in um, a rocky area such as Muskoka or the land around um, Peterborough, and where there isn't a predominant subclass one, two, and three agricultural lands. So in, in Perth County, because um, the county is class one, two, or three agricultural lands, I would suggest there are no rural lands in Perth County. So the app, this is significant because the planning um, justification report submitted by the application, by the applicant is suggesting that the lands are rural lands. I would suggest in Perth County, there are no rural lands. There are settlement areas, towns and villages. There are forested areas and woodlots and wetlands, and then the rest of the land is, is prime agricultural areas. This is different than Muskoka or an area around Peterborough, where a rural area includes prime agricultural areas and then rural lands, um, where there is, where the, where the quality of of the crop land is, is, doesn't um, achieve the class one, two, or three, or it's simply not class one, two, or three um, soil. So that, that is the review of the, the first question with regards to, is it, is it a, appropriate to consider a special agricultural policy area? The second um, planning question then, um, or a policy-level question is minimum distance separation requirements. So as the use is a um, a sensitive land use, um, proposing, proposing many residential uses. Um, it's a type B um, calculation as required by the provincial policy statement, um, the County Official Plan, as well as the provincial MAFRA MDS guidelines. And the type B um, calculation, um, which is a double distance, um, is required for barns within fifteen hundred meters of the subject property. So there are twelve livestock operations within this fifteen hundred meter buffer, and the applicant has provided MD, uh, type B MDS one calculations for all of these barns. The proposal does not meet um, the MDS requirements from two of the livestock barns. So here is an air photo. The subject property is outlined in black here. Um, and the red stars show the twelve barns. So the blue outline here is a fifteen hundred meter buffer from the subject property. And the red stars show all of the barns that um, are within that fifteen hundred meter buffer. So these are all the livestock operations that are within that fifteen hundred meter buffer. And the um, applicant has provided um, type B calculation for all of these livestock barns. As I mentioned, there are two um, where the MDS um, MDS one setbacks from these barns um, that the property doesn't conform with the required MDS one setbacks from these barns. And here is the, here are the two barns. So uh, the the property here, um, six zero seven six, line eighty-nine, is owned by um, Randy Ballmer. Randy and Brenda Ballmer. Um, and the, we have heard from the Ballmers, um, and they have advised that the MDS calculation that has been prepared um, models this barn as an unoccupied barn. And they have verbally advised that they, they're, they do have livestock and they can house forty head of cattle and um, a hundred pigs. So the four hundred and nineteen meter buffer here um, is modeled as if this barn um, was um, on, was not, was uh, empty. Um, so th- this um, calculation should be revisited by the consultants in order to determine what the uh, correct MDS calculation should be um, with the uh, livestock that the Ballmers have in this barn. Um, so that, that's generally the comment that we've received from the Ballmers. They, they don't have concerns with regards to the development. They are wanting to ensure that their barn has been modeled correctly. And then Fortress Farms is a dairy barn, um, and it has a six hundred and eighteen meter buffer from the barn, according to the MDS calculations prepared by the consultant, and six hundred and fifty-seven meters. So you can see here, um, the uh, impact from the Ballmer barn as it's been calculated and the Fortress Farms barn as it's been calculated by the applicant. Um, and uh, according to the policies, uh, it would there, there should be no um, development. That this, this um, area would be completely outside of any designation that was proposed by OPA twelve. Two, sorry, two twelve. So again, here is an air photo, um, showing the location of Fortress Farms in the Ballmer um, operation and the impact that they would have on the corners of these applications. And again, back to the drawing that had been provided by MHBC, that they have, uh, what they have said is that there would be buffers from these barns. And that the, that there would be no uses here. So the, the planning department, um, as it would offer the opinion that this area should be completely excluded from the official plan amendment. So the final uh, policy consideration um, for this application is um, with regards to um, the PPS section two, three, six. So I, I've made the point, like explaining the policies with regards to what is a rural area. In my opinion, there are no rural areas. Um, sorry, there are no rural lands, difference between rural lands and rural areas. So there are no rural lands in Perth County. There are agricultural lands, agricultural areas. And the provincial policy statement provides direction for considering non-agricultural uses such as this proposal within a prime agricultural area. So I've, I have included, and sorry for the text-heavy slide, I have included all the policy requirements for two, three, six um, for um, considering a non-agricultural use within a prime agricultural area. So it is possible to consider a non-agricultural use within a prime agricultural area. And the provincial policy statement outlines these four tests. So first, it doesn't comprise a, a specialty crop area. The proposed use complies with the MDS formula. There's an identified need within the planning horizon, which is twenty-five years. And alternative locations have been evaluated. There are no reasonable alternative locations which provide prime agricultural areas, and there are no reasonable alternative locations in primary agricultural da- areas with lower priority agricultural lands. So that um, concludes the review of the policy considerations. Um, and now I would go to the um, technical requirements. Um, and I, essentially, I, I, what I would offer is that the for traffic, we'll be looking to the Ministry of Transportation for their permitting requirements. Cultural heritage, there has been a stage one archaeological assessment completed and a stage two would be required. The communal sewer, sewage and water servicing is under um, the jurisdiction of the province because of the scale of the development. Um, and there is a provincial guideline uh, regarding uh, municipal responsibility for a communal water and sewage service, um, should, should the development proceed, um, which would um, suggest that North Perth um, would be um sh- should the development proceed, um which would um suggest that North Perth um would be requested to consider a responsibility agreement for privately run um sewage treatment's um facility of this size. And finally, um stormwater management. So the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority has provided comments that um the wetlands are an important component to natural flood and drought control on the landscape. Um and they ha- have indicated that there is an adequate buffer around the woodlot. Um but and that the buffer may not be sufficient to account for the existing wetlands on the site. Um and the wetlands might be impacted by the development of stormwater management. So those are additional questions um that we um would go back to once the policy considerations have been um addressed. So that um that con- concludes um the re- the planning department's review of this application. I'd like to um to uh refer back to my summary at the beginning of the planning report. Um to state that um this is a very unique site. I'm sure that all of council is aware of that. Um the prior use of the property for a provincial residential facility has left very um unique infrastructure in the agricultural landscape. We also recognize that the infrastructure on the site is has aged now, it's about sixty years old. Um the two development um projects and planning applications have been initiated since Eden Grove has acquired the site. And those um have left the uh they have been incompleted in the past decades um since uh it was it since uh the Cham Shan Temple attempted to develop the site and Eden Groves acquired the site, the property has felt fallen into a state of disrepair. Most recently, it's been used as a refuge uh by people without a place to live. And um the, in our tour of Eden Groves, um it was notable how much volunteer capacity Eden Groves has had to um um what would you say, clean up the site to the extent that they have done. There has been a huge amount of work with hundreds and hundreds of volunteers um to clean up debris that has been on the site. And we can see that there are many um many interesting um parts of the proposal that Eden Grove has submitted um to consider the extensive redevelopment of the site. So there are, there really are merits um to the proposal, given the unusual characteristics of the site. So that um, those are all my comments um deputy warden, and I'm available for questions, um and I understand that there are people who are wanting to attend the public meeting.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, uh Susanna. So at this time, uh I will, by council, if they have any questions or comments at this time. Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Um through you, uh deputy warden. Um thanks, Susanna, for your presentation. Um very informative and very detailed as always. Um I understand the planning require, policy requirements and the technical requirements as you presented. I just uh, I just can't help but wondering what uh what the alternative would be um if this development couldn't proceed, I'm just envisioning where uh vacant land would have to be purchased otherwise to perform such a development. And my concern would be that uh that it would be uh bare farmland that would have to be uh purchased to pursue this kind of development. So I just, I can't help but see the irony where uh we have a site that although it's designated agricultural, it really can't be reverted back to its original form as it was prior to the initial development in the nineteen sixties. So I understand the barriers, I just concerned about uh how the outcome would look if the development had to proceed otherwise on uh on bare farmland and it kind of going around in circles and uh we're trying to protect farmland, but ultimately we might potentially lose farmland if this development had to proceed in another location. Thank you.
Would you, would you like me to respond to that, Deputy Warden?
Yes, I would, please.
Um yeah, thank you very much for the comment. Um I I, in my opinion, that it were not, we haven't received the correct application um that uh the review of two, three, six indicates that there is an opportunity that the P P S does provide direction um for considering a non-agricultural use within an agricultural area. My concern with this specific application is that um it's not an agricultural use. So the, the application that has been applied for is a special agricultural policy area. Um and that it might be possible to consider an amendment to the official plan addressing the policy requirements in two, three, six of the P P S.
Thank you, Susanna. Counselor Kasonberg?
Uh thank you, Deputy Warden Kellam, and good morning. Um I'm interested in uh your quick estimates uh with regards to agricultural use of some of that uh land that does not have and is not occupied by buildings at this point on the site. Um because I think, you know, there, there's always the question, and and as I understand it, some uh part to the west, if if I'm correct, uh is being used already for um cropping. Um you know, if if you were to do some kind of estimating about how much of that land could actually be uh fertile and productive. Um what, do you, have you done that work? Do you, do you have any sense of that?
Um I believe that it was calculated, um that that I, I did watch the um recording of the North Perth Council meeting, so I, I appreciate that this um discussion item was discussed at North Perth. But uh from a planning perspective, the question is, is with regards to, I'm going to redirect the question, um and then I can come back. Um the, because the property is currently designated agricultural in the official plan, um from a planning perspective, the entire site is considered as agricultural. So the question is, is it appropriate to consider a non-agricultural use such as what's proposed within an agricultural designation? And, and in my opinion, the answer is no, it's not possible to consider that. However, section two, three, six of the P P S does provide latitude for considering a non-agricultural use within an agricultural area. And those, I'll, I'll just show you those um. I just would like to bring up that slide again. So, while the P P S um is very explicit with regards to what types of uses are considered agricultural use but agricultural uses, it does, the P P S also provides latitude for considering non-agricultural uses in prime agricultural areas. And while um we can all agree that this is a very unique site, I'll give you a couple of examples of what um non-agricultural uses might um might include. Um it might include a golf course, for example, or it might include um a summer camp, a church camp. So if the, the P P S then outlines um if a non-agricultural use is being considered in a prime agricultural area, such as Perth County, there are four requirements for that application. And that, and I reviewed those earlier, so I won't read them again. And that these policies should be considered, and if they are considered, then perhaps a designation, a, a different designation could be considered. So or a golf course, perhaps it would be a recreational designation. It wouldn't be an agricultural designation.
And answers your question, Counselor Kasonberg?
Not really.
Not, not really, but uh yes, but 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 Susanna knew that too, so uh that's okay. Um I, I, I guess, I, I mean, if I might make a brief comment, um you know, the, the scope of what has been proposed, as I understand it, and and maybe I'm missing something, is that there is to be some new builds, some new construction on what is essentially um usable green space in the proposition. And um you know, combining that new build with the potential uh occupancy within the proposal is going to wind up essentially creating a new village in North Perth. I mean, that, that's the reasonable way to look at it, right? It, this, this, the, the, the number of people who could live here based on some of the proposition that we've seen um could actually exceed the size of Moncton. Um and, and so this is a substantial proposition that, that has, as you say, um is read a whole bunch of policy barriers and a number of, of sort of administrative um uh concerns that have to be sorted out, including agreements with North Perth potentially around water and so, so forth, right? So um this is a really big scope project uh with lots and lots of implications. And uh I'm, I'm glad to see that, that we're trying to look through this. Uh I think as Counselor Trentowski has, has referenced, um you, you know, where else would this happen? Well, um I, I don't think that's the, the practical um issue of the investors and owners of the property, right? They're, they're not looking to build de novo. Um they have a, a site that they're looking to remediate and then build some more. Um uh and so the, the question was sort of a hypothetical one, and I'm glad that Counselor Trentowski raised that one, but but like, this is, this is a big deal. And uh and there are a lot of policy considerations that have to be sorted out, and, and if I'm following the bouncing ball, um the, the P P S is the first hurdle, really, in some ways. We have to get clarity on whether um the province's own instructions on this matter, and, and they're the ones in some ways who created the, the circumstances that we're facing right now um would, would actually tolerate this, like, you know, would they file an objection as soon as, as um this council uh as the approval authority for the official plan um made the change? They could, right? And so it's really important for our, for us, I think, to understand that the P P S implications um as, as soon as possible. And at this point, I, I hate to put it this way, but it seems a little confusing. And I'm hoping that uh we get some more clarity around the P P S and how it intersects with this file, because I think it's um, that there's pretty substantial intersection that has to be sorted out, and, and we need great clarity on that soon.
Thank you, Counselor Kasonberg. Any other council wish to make comments or have questions for Susanna when she's here? I am seeing none at this time. Thank you, everyone. Uh we will now ask, uh now receive some public comments, and I believe we do have a delegation or two. Who is first?
Just want to come between Sarah and Counselor Kenzie.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Good morning, please state your name.
Good morning, my name is Julianne Von Westerold. I'm a professional planner. I'm uh employed by M H B C Planning and Associates in, in Kitchener. And I'm here on behalf of the Eden Grove Board. Um this is a presentation, a brief presentation that I've prepared uh to provide hopefully some answers and to some of the questions that I'm sure are, you're thinking about at the moment. This is a, a picture of the, of the subject property from the street. With me today, I also have uh Mr. Cameron Moffett, who is a professional engineer, who uh may be able to answer some questions regarding servicing, if you have any of those types of questions. Could you please advance it to the next slide? Thank you. This is a subject land, and as um Ms. Reed pointed out, it's located on uh uh road one sixty-four uh or highway twenty-three, as it's locally known, just between line eighty-nine and line ninety. Uh and it is located approximately four kilometers north of the village of Gallenstown. Next slide, please. The subject lands were developed with a provincially operated institutional use, uh as, as uh Ms. Reed has uh identified. And at some point in time, there were up to five hundred persons on site, including uh workers, caregivers, and of course, the residents of, of the property in the mid nineteen sixties uh to the late nineteen nineties. Starting with uh the provincial use of lands, the associated buildings and structures. Um and the principal use of land ceased to be agriculture. So that decision was made already about sixty years ago when the lands were no longer used for agricultural purposes. Following the closure of the provincial facility, lands were sold and redeveloped as a recreational operation with a hotel and conference center and a nine-hole golf course. The zoning ballot was amended, amended to permit those uses, and they are still permitted on the site today in the, in the current zoning. Although the site works were undertaken, the golf course and hotel did not complete development and operate. The lands were sold for the development of a spiritual use within the existing onsite buildings. The spiritual use operated for a number of years, and then it ceased, and the lands were sold to the current landowners, the Eden Grove Board. In this regard, the lands have been used or proposed to be used for non-agricultural uses for approximately sixty years. And these include multiple buildings, roads, and related infrastructure, include, including a sewage lagoon established by the province when they operated the site. Lands were acquired by Eden Grove. And, excuse me, is this like, is this the third slide? Okay, yeah, right. As you can see, this is a little bit of a close-up of site. Okay, these lands were acquired by Eden Grove. We have a vision to reuse the existing buildings and the infrastructure on, onsite to create a master-planned community in the fullness of time. That would be um a place where people can live, work, and um age in place. Next slide, please. The lands are designated uh agriculture and are subject to special policy area thirty-one. The lands, the land use permissions established in the official plan were the result of three separate official plan amendments. And a site-specific um area uh policy uh thirty-one permits a number of non-agricultural uses. These are permitted to date. These are not things that we are asking, these are already permitted. A place of worship, a retreat center, including short-term overnight accommodation, and accessory use, including accessory storage, warehousing, and offices. A hotel and conference center with a maximum of two hundred and sixty-six rooms and accessory uses. And these uses were, were uh permitted, subject to the evaluation of the infrastructure that we've heard is, is aging. And we are not denying that the infrastructure is aging. Um that, those studies are underway and are going to be uh subject to approval by the regulatory authority, the Ministry of Environment. The subject lands have approximately a hundred and sixty-four acres. The site contains multiple buildings as well as private communal water and sanitary services, including uh sewage lagoon. As part of the Ministry of Environmental Approval, the water and sanitary is being studied extensively. No development can occur until the studies are complete. And in that regard, we have proposed what's called a holding provision for the subject lands, only to be removed once the Ministry of the Environment uh approvals have been obtained. The northern, if you want to advance the next slide, please, yeah. The northern portion of the site uh contains a woodlot which will not be impacted by the development. Additional study of the woodlot is underway, and the site is located on the opposite side of two other non-agricultural uses. Um as identified by, by Ms. Reed earlier, there's a hotel there and a, a current uh car dealership. As for the subject lands, um yes, there's owned uh agricultural and, and with a special provision twenty-seven. This zone has already been established by the permitted lands and permits the following non-agricultural uses to date. This is in the zoning. A nursing home with a maximum of a hundred units. The hotel and conference center. The residential land lease development is already permitted today with a maximum of a hundred attached dwellings, such as semi-detached and townhouse dwellings. These are uses that are permitted today. Commercial recreational uses such as a fitness center and a swimming pool, a private nine-hole golf course to be used for residents and/or patrons, as well as accessory uses and structures. Can I have the next slide, please? I would like to just go over this chart, and this chart is, I, I prepared in order to just help you, I understand what is currently permitted and what is actually being proposed by the, by the Eden Grove Board. A place of worship is a permitted use in the official plan. The proposed use is a church, which is a place of worship. So, in our opinion, it's already permitted. A hotel conference center with a maximum of two hundred and sixty-six rooms is already permitted. A hotel conference center with a maximum of 266 rooms is already permitted, but we are not seeking any permissions with respect to that. That's already permitted. An accessory retail building within existing buildings are already permitted. What we're, what we're proposing is that a restaurant use be permitted in addition to the other retailing uses that are permitted as a standalone building, as opposed to part of an existing building. A nursing home is already permitted with up to 100 units in the official plan. What the proponents are proposing is 154 beds nursing home or long-term care facility, which is the same thing. The use is permitted in the official plan, and an official plan amendment is required just to increase the number of units from 100 to 154. So that's what, that's what the ask is. Commercial recreational uses, fitness and center and swimming pool are already permitted, but we're not pursuing anything of that nature. A nine-hole golf course is permitted, but we're not pursuing that as well. A retreat center with short-term accommodation is already permitted. And the current owners, the Eden Grove Board, would like to continue this use. The hotel is a permitted use in the official plan and the zoning bylaw. The amendment is just seeking clarity to confirm that guest suites are also the same as these overnight accommodations. So we, the, what we have here is some, some uses are permitted in the official plan, while others are permitted in the zoning bylaw. What we're trying to do is make sure that the two documents are consistent, so that the uses that are permitted by both are consistent. That's what we're trying to achieve here, which, which necessitates a few other amendments. Accessory storage and warehousing and office uses are already permitted in the official plan or zoning. And what, what the proponents are proposing is to expand the office and warehouse buildings, which are already permitted onsite. The amendment is just seeking clarity to align the existing permissions in both doc, in both documents. May I have the next slide, please? Thank you. Residential uses as part of a long-term land lease, including semi-detached and townhouse units, are already currently permitted, up to 100 units. What the proponents at Eden Grove are proposing is to increase that to 154 units total. I've broken down that there would be approximately 64 semi-detached and approximately 90 townhouse units opposed with this development. The zoning bylaw permits the use, and the amendment proposes to increase just the number from 100 to 154 units. The new uses that are proposed with this proposal is a private school for up to 100 students. My understanding is that they're proposed to be located in one of the existing buildings, once they're restored and renovated to ministry standards. Another new use that is proposed is a retirement home or assisted living, whichever term you want to call it, up to 100 suites. And this is a complimentary use to the nursing home use that is already permitted. So what that would do would allow persons that are aging to age in place, so that you have those that need limited, limited or no, no assistance. They could live in, in some of the homes. Those that require some, uh, uh, assistance could live in the retirement community, and those that require longer-term care could reside in the nursing home that is already permitted. The other new use that is proposed is the seniors apartments. There are fif- approximately 50, and they are proposed in the existing buildings. So once the existing buildings have been restored and renovated, we're trying to use some of the infrastructure that is already there, because it is a lot of infrastructure. Other forms of residential uses are also permitted, so that semi-detached and townhouses use units are already permitted. So this would be in addition to that. May I have the next slide, please? This is the master plan for the site. It is all very conceptual. And I wanted to point out a few things for you. The purple area on the site at the, at the west part of the site, so, so the Perth Road is, is running north and south, so this is, this is facing kind of west and east. The future development site means there's no development happening there now. There's nothing proposed at this point in time either with the proposed development. It's just to acknowledge that it's an area that could be developed. The arrows are pointing to where the apartments are proposed in the, in the existing buildings. So the pods, as they were called, in that general area, the apartments are being proposed. The, I think my arrows are slightly off there, but the warehouse and office additions are in the existing buildings. They're just slightly higher. Yes, in that area. Thank you. And there's also a church being proposed for 400 persons in the area shown right there. And in the yellow area, uh, this is the area that is being proposed for the long-term land lease option. And the reason why the proponent has proposed this is not only it is already permitted, but it also would, would make housing more affordable for those that are entering the housing market. If they're not purchasing the land that goes with the units, they're just purchasing the units, makes it a much more affordable option. Um, and so that's where the, we're proposing to put the semi-detached and townhouse in the yellow areas. The long-term care facility is proposed to be located between the existing buildings and the woodlot and not to encroach in the woodlot area. It's just generally in that vicinity, a long-term care facility is proposed to be constructed, which would, which would complement the uses that are already permitted onsite. Within the MDS arc, we are not proposing any new development. The new development to, uh, in that first MDS arc where is, um, to the west, the, the top one. Nothing new is being proposed there. That's already existing. The purple area shows, the deeper purple shows existing areas, and the green area is a buffer that is not going to be touched. Um, and in the lands within the other arc, what we've put in those lands is perhaps a park, if the, if there are children or, or people here that they can have some green space, park area, so definitely not, no new development. And perhaps some parking for the pink area. The pink area is proposed for the restaurant, but only on the other side of the, on the north side of the, of the arc, so not within the arc itself. The only use that would be within the arc would be the actual parking for that use. That's what we're proposing. Right? Thank you. I just wanted to re- reiterate that the decision to make, to, to call these lands agricultural was made a long time ago. It was made six years ago. The PPS states that agricultural areas are to be protected for the long term. I'm not disputing that. Subject lands have not been used for agricultural purposes for more than 60 years. Yes, there's a small area that is in, in cultivation, but if that is of concern, that perhaps we can, we can discuss that later at some other point. Although the lands are designated agriculture, there are many non-agriculture uses already permitted on this property. The special, the existence of a special policy area kind of already says that these lands aren't being used for agriculture. It's a special policy area, and therefore it has these other uses. There is a significant amount of infrastructure and buildings on the land. As you've seen through Ms. Reed, she provided lots of pictures, which, which identified the, uh, what's already on site. The, so much so that it is extremely unlikely that these lands would ever be redeveloped for agricultural purposes, because to acquire these lands and do away with all the infrastructure would be very cost prohibitive. The official plan and zoning bylaw amendment build on existing permissions and propose some complementary uses that are, are designed to provide sufficient separation from surrounding agricultural operations. The lands are not being removed from agricultural production. They were already removed 60 years ago. The PPS policies are intended to preserve and protect agricultural lands from conversion to non-agricultural uses. But I, I wanted to stress, the conversion has already taken place. And the permissions for non-agricultural uses already exist. In this regard, the continued use of the lands for non-agricultural uses is consistent with the PPS. It is acknowledged that study of existing infrastructure, including the lagoon and, and water services and stormwater management has to be completed in order to permit a redevelopment of this, of this nature. The Ministry of Environment are the approval authority for the certificate of approval, and all reports and recommendations are subject to their approval. This is a unique site that is not agricultural and could be redeveloped to make better use of the infrastructure if these lands were, were reviewed and more as an anomaly or something unique than in a rural context, rather than in, within the agriculture context. The official pla- in conclusion, the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the PPS. The proposed official plan amendment is intended to clarify previously permitted uses and to align the existing permitted uses in the zoning bylaw with the permitted uses in the official plan. The location of the proposed use is appropriate and considers official plan direction to locate sensitive uses without impacting surrounding agricultural uses. The development is not proposed to remove any more lands from agricultural production. Improvements are proposed to buildings and the site, which will include any required upgrades to the existing water, sewage, and stormwater services inside, as required by the approval authorities to support this development. We recommend a holding provision be applied to the lands that will prevent the development of the lands until such time as necessary approvals for the private infrastructure is in place. The decision to take these lands from, out of agricultural production occurred over 60 years ago, before there was a PPS. The lands will likely never revert back to agriculture, as it is very cost prohibitive. The PPS also directs municipalities to make better use of their infrastructure, and the redevelopment of those lands would do this for this site. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, like I said, I also have um, our engine, our project engineer with me here today, if there are any specific questions for me or for him. Thank you.
Thank you for, excuse me, thank you for your presentation, Julianne. Council, floor up for any questions that you have for her. Start off with Councilor McDermott.
Um, you chose 154 of beds for the person. I'm assuming that you chose that number because that would be sustainable. But anything less than that would not be sustainable.
I believe so, yes. That was what the, the clients intended, yes.
Okay, so basically you're just asking for a holding provision to be put on the land.
There will be some, there's, there are amendments required to align the two documents. The zoning bylaw allows certain uses. The, the official plan allows certain other uses in order to bring those together, to allow all of those uses for this proposal and to allow a few clarifications or additional permissions. That's what the amendment is for.
Thank you. Any other counselors wishing to ask a question at this time? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much. So at this time, is there anyone else wishing to make comments in support or against this application? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. It's Murray Martin. I'm one of the board members. We are looking to you as a county council to help us move this along, and I think the presentation was done well. Just two things that came to mind. Uh, that wasn't said. Uh, one is that we did have the structural engineers take a look at the buildings. Uh, they're basically built out of concrete, so you would know that the elements have gone through. The structure in itself is sound. So I just wanted you to know that, that it's not falling down. It's, it's obviously in disrepair, but it's not falling down, so that's good. Um, and just to reiterate, we are looking to put emphasis on the elderly and the people that are underprivileged and see what we can do and help as a community. And that's the reason why we are a not-for-profit corporation, so we can help more. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Murray. Question, Councilor McDermott, yes?
Would this be open to anybody, or would you, uh, to just, to tour for the church?
Or sorry, for people to, to buy?
Like, like, could anybody go to, to this development, or would this be specific to your church?
It is open. We are, we will have certain criteria that we're looking for, but it is open. It's not just to our church. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to make comments at this time? Seeing on council, I do have a resolution. The council received a report titled Perth County Official Plan Amendment 212, affecting lands described as part lots 25, 26, and 27, concession 7, 9100, Rule 164, Wallace Ward, municipality of North Perth. And that council receives comments from the public for consideration regarding official plan amendment number 212 to the county of Perth, official plan affecting lands described as part lots 25, 26, and 27, concession 7, 9100, Rule 164, Wallace Ward, in the municipality of North Perth. May I have a mover? Moved by Council McDermott, second by Councilor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Next, we have Perth County Official Plan Amendment 214, and I believe Sally McMillan, our manager of planning services, speaking to this.
Morning, Sally. Good morning, Deputy Warden Callum and members of council. Uh, I'm going to present today some materials for consideration at this public meeting for an official plan amendment on an agricultural property. It is just outside of Stratford here at 2529 Line 37, and it is in Perth East. I have some slides that I'm going to share. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, this is a property that is, sorry, it's thirty, uh, sixteen and a half acres, rather. And it's actively used for farming. Um, you can see it's, it's got two designations on it. I don't know if you can see my cursor there. The, the white areas with the lines, uh, the line, the hatching is the portions of the property that are designated in, as agriculture, and the sort of maroon color are, represent a designation that that covers a licensed pit for extraction of aggregate resources. So the official plan amendment that we're looking at today would impact the lands largely designated agriculture on this property. It's act, the, the, those portions are also actively used for farming. And the existing uses in those agriculturally designated areas include a dwelling, an accessory shed, a greenhouse, and a retail store. Um, I'm going to give you a layout of the, the site in a little bit of the agricultural portions. Uh, and there are currently two access points to the site. So if you can see my cursor there, there's one here along Line 37 that leads to the retail store. And then there's another one uh, right here that leads into the site and sort of branches off. And goes over here towards an area just, just north of the previously extracted um, gravel extraction area. So the owner for this property, um, as you can already see, has a retail store. Uh, they are, they're have, they have, the operation that occurs there, it uses agricultural produce from the farm and is considered a sort of value-added operation where they prepare meals and they prepare other foodstuffs to be sold from that retail site. So their value adding to the, um, to the food that's produced here and in some other local farms as well. They're proposing to enhance this value-added, uh, on-farm diversified use by adding, um, two dining areas. One would be an outdoor dining area, and it would be down in the southern end of this agriculture. One would be an outdoor dining area and it would be down uh in the southern end of this agricultural portion. Uh that would be outdoor dining um on a seasonal basis and then. Right uh adjacent or beside the retail portion and indoor dining um option. So they're looking to cluster that indoor dining with the existing development here. Um for the retail store and then have a sort of an outdoor dining space down here that um would include a covered tent. And um a wood burning barbecue and a portable washroom. And the parking um for both uses would would be maintained up here at the retail. Store location and then folks would use this second access here uh as pedestrian uh. Bro, as a pedestrian network to come back here for those seasonal dining, outdoor dining opportunities. The existing store will continue to be to be used for retailing the food um that is prepared on site for takeout purposes. The indoor dining uh that I mentioned beside the retail store is proposed to be uh twenty by thirty feet in size. And the retail store operates uh roughly five days a week from nine to five. And the dining um that's proposed to be added to this on farm diversified use would occur approximately three days a week. Uh in the evenings with seating um depending on whether it's the indoor or outdoor. Um dining service for one setting per evening. So it's not sort of in and out constantly. It's like everyone arrives. They have their meal and their on-farm experience and then then they leave all together. Um deliveries to the site are minimal and most of the food is grown on the site. Uh the the owner approximates eighty-five percent of the food that they um are using to. To prepare um on this on farm versatile use is grown on the premises. And. The specific official plan amendment. Um would. The the text of that official plan amendment adds a site-specific policy to these agricultural areas on the farm. To that agricultural designation and they're very specific to the indoor and outdoor dining spaces. Um and in addition to the retailing on the premises and the um the square footage of the uh. The additional structures. So uh you can see on the photo on the slide there now that. Uh the retail store is a again here by line thirty seven that's existing with the parking space. Um they're proposing this uh location here just behind the retail for the indoor dining space. Um and then the pedestrian walkway across here and down to um the existing. Um structures down there, a greenhouse and a house with a well. And that folks will come down here and there'd be this um tent and outdoor barbecue with portable washroom. Uh here overlooking the the water feature that's been uh created through the um aggregate extraction. That summarizes the proposed uses. It's essentially the enhancement of an existing on-farm diversified use. And um outlining the parameters here, I'll stop here for the purposes of the public meeting. Um the planning department hasn't received any uh comments from the public in writing or over the phone um to date. Um so we'll see if there's anyone here to speak today.
Thank you Sally. Council, this time do you have any comments or questions for Sally? I am seeing none. Thank you very much. Um we'll now receive public comments and I believe we have Caroline Baker. Uh planning consultant for Baker Planning Group and she is joining us online. We can get her there.
Good morning Deputy Warden and members of council. Can you hear me all right?
We sure can. Good morning.
Uh apologize for the delay. It took a moment for Zoom to to switch me over to a panelist. Uh certainly, uh Ms. McMillan's presentation uh was very thorough and provided the background and nature on this official plan amendment application. I am representing the owners of the property uh and submitted the planning justification uh report. I just wanted to note that we have reviewed staff's report, uh their recommendations, which are later on in the agenda this morning, I believe. Uh and we would concur uh with their conclusions. Um as noted, both the provincial policy statement and OMAFRA's guidelines for on-farm diversified uses and ag-related uses. Support these type of uses within the prime agricultural area, uh provided they're a small in size and land area. Uh that they're directly related to agriculture and support agriculture. Uh my understanding is the current official plan predates uh those OMAFRA policies and the county is looking. Update them in the new official plan. Uh so certainly this official plan is required at this time. Uh to implement uh both the PPS and OMAFRA. So certainly here to answer any questions about the proposed use. Uh or any questions should uh there be members of the public in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you Caroline. Uh council, any questions or comments for her at this time? I am seeing none. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make comments in support or against this application? Do you have anyone on line at this time? Who else? Okay, thank you. Then council, I do have a resolution. The council receives the official plan amendment number two one four Lynn River Farms by Mike and Lindsay Higgins. Affecting lands described as concession to part lot twenty nine as RP forty four R one zero six five. Part two to part four northeast, northeast Hope Ward two five two nine line thirty seven. Township of Perth East and that. Council receives comments from the public for consideration regarding official plan amendment number two one four. Lynn River Farms by Mike and Lindsay Higgins affecting lands described as concession to part lot twenty nine as RP. Forty four R one zero six five, parts two to part four northeast Hope Ward two five two nine line thirty seven. Township of Perth East. May I have a mover? By Councilor Smith, second by Councilor Orr. Comments or questions? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thank you ladies. Okay. Is there any other business at this time? Councilor McKenzie.
Um I have a question and and if it's um if it's out of order, you can rap my knuckles and and and. Quiet, but it has to do with the first application that we had. And I realize that Susanna is not there, maybe and uh maybe Sally isn't there now either. Um but my question was, I wondered if either our planning office. Or the group that's involved with this project has any conversation with the provincial government? Uh with the powers that that be, how they would actually look at this thing. Uh seems to me we're spinning our wheels here. It it's it's a problem that's been caused by the province. Um and I just wonder what their input. And like I said, if I'm out of line, just tell me. But it's just a question that I wonder if we've had any conversations with the province on it.
Not a line and no, we can follow up with you. Okay, making over that?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, are there any announcements? None again? Hey, council, I do have a motion that the planning public meeting be adjourned at approximately ten twenty two. Move by Council McDermott, second by Councilor Trentowski. All those in favor? And that is carried. And council, I have a motion that the regular council meeting reconvene at approximately ten twenty two AM. Move by. Councilor McDermott again, second by Councilor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. We are back in regular council. We'll move on to, I believe it's seven point. Two of our agenda, which is the emergency management review modernization product, project. And who's speaking to that? You can, okay, Laurie, thank you.
Thank you through the chair. Um Todd, you're gonna bring in Candy Lipton?
Love Candy, Bill and Peter.
Thank you. So through the chair, the county received modernization funding from the province for a review of the emergency management programs. In the Perth County area, which are seven. And um so Stratford, uh St Mary's, the county and the four lower tiers. The CAO, CEMCs and the alternate CEMCs, we will review this report in detail and consider changes. To enhance our various programs while at the same time strengthen our partnerships and um. We have not had that opportunity to do that. The report is before you at this particular meeting because we have. Requirements through the provincial funding program that we have to have it presented before the end of January. So this was our opportunity to do that and we will be meeting with those groups um. Uh in the very near future, Rick Fraser, who is the county CEMC and most knowledgeable about the content. Of our particular programs as well as the other two programs is um on vacation on a cruise ship somewhere really nice. So he sends his regrets and he is looking forward to uh bringing uh reports forward. Uh to update council on um how we can strengthen our programs and and those relationships as we work together. Um given the um information and the recommendations that we have uh from the consultants. So the GTS consultants conducted the review. They provided the recommendations on some key areas in our programs. As well as the supporting software. There was a very large amount of collaboration. Uh uh between the um parties and GTA and uh the seven municipalities. With those key individuals being um involved in the program. So um it was um a a great exercise. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Candy Lipton and she will introduce the members of the GTA team and she'll provide a brief overview of the report.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome Candy.
Good morning and thank you for having us. Um I'm Candy Lipton and I have two partners, Bill Needles and Peter Rotolo. Um we make the. Sorry, we make up the core of the GTA team and uh special thanks to Lori, David and Rick. Uh and all of the municipals, municipality staff that gave us excessive time and and insight and information. Uh it was truly comprehensive and I'm looking forward to now giving you a high executive summary. Of uh what our findings are, our recommendations and um next steps. Um can I just ask? Do you want, I I'm sharing my slide deck. I just wanna make sure that.
Yes, please.
No problem. Okay. Hopefully you get it. Can you see that now?
Sure can.
Excellent, thank you. So um briefly, we did a very comprehensive review. Uh uh analysis of the needs uh that was required, the research. We went to all seven municipalities. Reviewed uh almost a hundred and fifty varying documents on emergency management. Had some follow-up questions as well as discussions with uh Lori and David at the time, who was a uh county CEMC. Um to clarify any issues. Uh as I mentioned, I'm gonna review some of our high-level findings, observations, recommendations. Um next steps, which includes the uh defining the roles and responsibilities of the CAOs, CEMCs and alt CEMCs. Uh choosing a model, we presented three options for models and as well as the roadmap going forward, which is a step-by-step. Recommendation and to Lori's um uh mention, we also were asked to provide a recommendation. For an electronic tool to support the emergency operations center, uh and I will include that information as well. So uh very um briefly, a number of the uh um issues that came up. So one of the first recommendations we have is uh following the incident management system. Also known as IMS. Um we recognize that uh some of the documentation in the Perth region. All seven municipalities. So when I mentioned Perth, I'm talking all seven municipalities. Um there's reference to in the IMS system and some of the training that has been provided has used the ICS, the Incident Command System. Just for those of you for a little background, those two systems are similar. There are some differences with them. They're very similar. The reason why we recommend IMS is because it is the Ontario provincial standard and guideline. That's what they use. Um all of the allied health and first responders that would be working with Perth County. Perth region in any kind of incident or emergency that might happen. They follow the IMS system. This will help prevent any communication um. Struggles or any information issues so that you're talking the same language and you're using the same system. Utilizing ICS training as a supplement to IMS is absolutely appropriate and and uh. Will enhance that kind of training. So there's no problem there. Um in terms of documents, resources and information, as you may or may not be aware, many of the documents are are outdated. They need to be aligned to current practices. There's some missing information. Um and again. Uh one of the major issues is some of the documents confuse the municipal hierarchy. With the incident management system hierarchy or the way to run an incident manager. You don't want the mayor being the 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 director of the EOC, for example. Uh just to ensure that the role of the mayor is to give guidance, direction and um. Support to where they wanna go, not necessarily run the incident themselves. As far as training is concerned, again, there's inconsistency across training. We recognize that in some cases. The um exercises and uh were conducted when staff were not fully trained, didn't understand. The incident management language. Um and that causes challenges. Our ideal situation is to train people first. However, recognizing there's a number of staff in the seven municipalities, you have a multi-year training plan, which is great now. Um what we would encourage, because it will take many years to get all of your essential staff. Trained up to know how to respond to an incident or emergency. We recommend a fully trained. Um team that are available across the municipalities to be available and accessible. Um for any type of emergency that will happen, hopefully never, but may happen between now and then. Um we are, our our recommendation is to have three to five people trained per position. Because we've, we, as we all know, many of these incidents don't last just an eight-hour period. They last often many days, so you need coverage over twenty-four seven. Um the EMP, the Emergency Management Plan. We recommend that it is consistent across all seven municipalities. That doesn't mean identical. You need to have the individuality of the very municipalities, but you wanna be able to support and help each other and know. Where information is and where the tools are and that you have a similar um plan in place. And of course, the plan isn't a one-and-done experience. You have to annually review it. You have to track changes. There should be sign-offs, so you have a tracking of what has changed over the course of years and a process that helps to maintain it. Um hazard identification or risk assessment. Um the the Perth municipalities went through a great, Perth County went through a great. Uh update on their HIRA through the UFT. That's terrific. Your emergency management plan should align. And be based off of the hazards and risks that are identified for the seven municipalities. However, those two documents should remain uh separate and the HIRA, of course, confidential. Um the Emergency Operations Center, or as we refer to as the EOC, again clarity of rules and responsibilities. And should be aligned to the IMS model rather than um uh organizational hierarchy. So next steps, um when we looked at the process, we really identified the importance of. Um ensuring that the, there is clear rules and responsibilities defined for both the CAO. Role across all seven municipalities and the CEMC and alt CEMCs. Um we recommend that you use one of the models that we've recommended. In the report, we've provided extensive pros and cons to each model. As well as our recommended model. And then to follow the step-by-step roadmap for moving forward. Uh with respect to the electronic tools. Um the uh our recommendation is that you continue your investment in the Esri Arc. GIS system. Um and if you enhance that investment. Uh and ensure that it's accessible across all seven municipalities, you'll have a sufficient. you'll have a sufficient and comprehensive uh um software program that can provide real-time information during an incident so that people don't have to be boots on the ground, but they can be virtual at any time and help you make informed decisions regardless of where the incident or emergency is. So just uh clarifying the roles and responsibilities. With respect to the C O's, we really see the C O's in the seven municipalities as being the champions of the emergency management program, taking the lead, um choosing the model based on obviously support and guidance of the C E M Cs, but really taking on that leadership role and ensuring the um the follow, the follow-up and follow-through of the implementation is done. As far as the C E M Cs and alt C E M Cs, in a similar way they need to have clarity of their rules and responsibilities during an emergency or during an incident. Um and so they, we recommend that a decision tree is developed for the role and responsibility of the different C E M Cs and alt C E M Cs as well as trigger points. So when, when, for example, does the county C E M C take over versus the C E M C of Stratford, as an example? Um and that's going to depend on the incident, the type of incident, how broad the incident is. All of those things have to be taken into consideration and be considered. Um and we've put some detail into the report on that. We also recommend that one of the C E M Cs or alt C E M Cs be the lead coordinator of this process of your um revision to your emergency management program, which is including the all aspects of it, from the E M P to the training to everything else that you're doing. And then to lead the development of the revised E M P. Um just to review briefly the three models. Um so in essence, three models is a top-down model, county-led model. Uh the second is a bottom-up model, municipal-led model, and the third is a hybrid, which is the one that we recommend. To briefly give you the pros and cons, um in the top-down model, the biggest challenge here is you're always going to run into limited resource issues and it becomes very much a um a challenge from a twenty-four-seven operations. In the, in the bottom-up or municipal-led, you have the opposite problem. You'll have significant number of redundancies of individuals, rules and responsibilities, which becomes very costly and probably cost prohibitive. The recommendation we have is a hybrid model, which allows the flexibility of municipalities to help each other. If the incident is in one municipality, others can come join and help as required or cover off the twenty-four-seven. The county can do the same. Um but it comes down to that discussion as to who does what. What's that decision tree? When do we bring each other in? What are the trigger points? And uh those are important discussions that need to be had in any organization, let alone an organization that has seven municipalities. The roadmap going forward really is a step-by-step um process that's recommended. Um again, the C O's leading the process in emergency management, being the champions of emergency management with the support of um all of the experts around them to choose the best model for the seven municipalities. Um again, the C E M Cs, alt C E M Cs develop their rules, responsibilities, their decision uh points, their trigger points. Choose a one lead, you, you don't want seven people leading a project because you'll have a little bit of chaos. So as we all know, in project management, always best to have one lead with the obvious support and cooperation, collaboration of the other C E M Cs and alt C E M Cs. Modify the E M P across all municipalities, again, to be consistent, but not exact, but certainly uh similar. Create a process to ensure that the E M P Emergency Management Plan is annually updated, maintained, staying current, uh train staff over the year, over the years and have that um identified team who's accessible and available to provide to respond to an incident should anything happen between now and the time you're e- even going forward, you always want to have sort of that expert team. And uh make sure that um you're able to cover beyond an eight-hour timeframe. Many times incidents and events take multiple, what we call, operation uh periods, but it's really, you're talking hours, days and sometimes weeks, right, depending on how long it takes to recover. And I believe that is all, any questions?
Thank you Candy for your presentation, council. At this time, any comments or questions you'd like, that's Candy. Seeing none, again, thank you for your presentation Candy, and I believe it was uh Bill and Peter that were joining us online as well. Thank you gentlemen for attending as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, enjoy the rest of your day. Counselor this time, okay, counsel, this time I do have a resolution that the council receives a report titled Emergency Management Review Modernization Project for Information. May I have a mover? Move by Counselor Orr, second by Counselor McDermott, all those in favor? And that is carried. Counselor, this time we're going and viewers that are watching, we're going to take a a six-minute comfort break and we'll come back at, I believe that's ten forty-five. Thank you.
In terms of public education, one of our focuses recently has been on roads, um particularly in the fall. Uh so thinking back to Q four of twenty-twenty-two, uh we had some public awareness campaigns around road safety during harvest season as well as some preliminary education for the public around where they can source road condition information. Further to that, during uh G I S Day, we uh worked collaboratively with uh our G I S uh team to develop an educational tool and interactive map around our road network, um which has now since morphed into a uh road information map to aid the public and their knowledge of road jurisdiction, understanding that there are three levels of roads in the county, uh M T O, county and local. Um and the evolution of this project uh has worked well uh to complement some of the other initiatives we have around public education relating to roads. And this ties in nicely, it's a significant weather event we experienced uh shortly, uh just around the holidays. Um during that time, communications was responsible for public notices, media releases, website and social media updates and amplifying uh messaging from emergency services related to road closures uh and health and safety. Uh since that event, um staff have been a part of several debrief discussions um to understand uh lessons learned and some uh different ways we could communicate during such events to ensure the public is kept as up-to-date uh regularly as possible. In terms of community engagement, the county has a community engagement framework and corporate communications helps to support divisions in their work to utilize the framework uh when uh tackling different projects and program evaluations. On the screen, there's some uh examples of these, including the Accessibility Plan Update, um the Cultivating Opportunity Grant Program, as well as the Natural Environment Public Consultation Process. So this can include social media posts, you're seeing some examples here on the screen, as well as updates and strategies around our website and how to communicate uh these tools to the public. And finally, just an example of of some of the special projects that communications is often involved in. We recently had the Warden's election and inaugural council meeting, you'll see some familiar faces on the screen. Um but uh working with legislative services to uh develop a digital voting term, terminal, as well as updating some of the program documents, um developing news releases as well as um creating a council onboarding handbook. These are a few examples of some of the activities that occurred during this time period, but there's certainly more included in the report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you Sarah for your report, council. Do you have any questions or comments for Sarah at this time? Counselor Smith, you're first.
I I guess not necessarily for Sarah, but but you brought up the um uh significant events, weather events, et cetera, that sometimes happened. And I realized that, again, not probably not for you, but for maybe Lori, that we did as some, the the warden and some other staff had a a brief debriefing of the event that took place here back around the Christmas time. Will, will we as council be getting something back, a report back from that event that, you know, we, I've heard a lot of concerns or the communication was, was lack, um and some of it, of course, was incorrect, et cetera. Just asking if we will be getting something back from that meeting.
Certainly through, through uh the chair, um um Rick um Fraser is away this week as our C E M C and uh he was involved in the brief, um obviously, Public Works Director and staff were heavily involved in it. And when he's back next week, I'll speak to him about perhaps a a report um that can come back to update council on lessons learned and what we're actually going to do the next time. And what were some of those, the communications um uh issues uh where we have control and where we don't? Because there were issues that were simply beyond the um the reach of the county to be able to remedy. So certainly we will bring something back.
Thank you.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, council, I do have a resolution that the county council receives a corporate communications update Q four report. Move by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Smith, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thanks again, Sarah. Moving on our agenda, planning services, uh Perth County Official Plan Amendment, uh that we discussed earlier, Lynn River Farms. I believe Sally will be joining us again.
Morning again, Deputy Warden Callum and members of council. I'm gonna pick up where I left off um from our public meeting earlier this morning on official plan amendment number two-one-four for um the Lynn River Farms on farm diversified use. There were no um public comments uh and the planning questions on this file have largely been sorted through. So it's appropriate, I think, then to carry on with a recommendation, which is what I'm going to offer you now. Uh I'm gonna run through the policy rationale for the department's recommendation and start by identifying exactly why an official plan amendment is necessary. So let me um my slides back up. Hopefully you can see them there on the screen. The official plan uh that we have in place today allows for secondary farm occupations. And so the new terminology for that is on farm diversified uses. And um when that policy was written in our official plan, it it specified and outlined parameters for the scale and scope of on-farm diversified uses as well as the types of things that could be um considered as on-farm diversified uses. And so um we're seeing applications now, um while we're updating that policy in our official plan that are, that are sort of uh beyond those originally established parameters. And we're therefore looking to the P P S for guidance and the uh guidelines from, from O M A F R A on um permitted uses in Ontario's prime agricultural areas to help uh those, those documents, well, the the O M A F R A document in particular is, is there to help guide planning authorities on implementing the P P S policies that you see on the screen there now. Um I will eventually come through in a, in a new official plan here for Perth County as well. Um the, the provincial policy statement identifies that um sort of overarching uh diversification of the economic base is important, including value-added uh operations and and opportunities. And that um in, in prime agricultural areas in particular, there are some parameters to that. So in the prime agricultural areas, those um diverse, diversified economic opportunities on farm diversified uses are to be compatible with and not hinder the surrounding agricultural operations. And that's where that guideline offers us parameters to help evaluate uh the scope and scale of proposals brought forward by uh folks in our community. So this chart gives us the specifics on um this particular on-farm diversified use and how to look at it. Uh it's to be located on a farm. It's to be secondary to an agricultural use and both of those things are, um those boxes are checked. Uh with respect to scale and scope, it's to be limited in area uh which means minimizing the land taken out of ag production. That, that the agricultural uh use remains the prime, the primary use in that, in that location and that off-site impacts are limited or mitigated um to the extent possible. Uh so if we look at those things, uh those types of scope questions, we see that um you know, we're called maybe from the site sketch, which I'll show you again here shortly, that the dining area, the in, the indoor dining area is situated really close to the existing retail use and isn't taking land out of production. And the outdoor dining opportunity that they hope to establish here is located along um a portion of a aggregate operation that is sort of come to fruition and, and that strip along there is uh is is not currently used for crop production either. So the, the proposal as outlined is not taking land out of production. Agriculture remains the primary use of that, um the, the agricultural designated areas on this farm. Um it's where they produce the food to um to do this value-added uh operation. And they have uh Attempted to limit offsite impacts by through distance, through parking areas being in close to the road and. And in conjunction with the retail area and having the outdoor dining towards the back of the farm. The, the. Fourth row in this chart of tests. It includes, but is not limited to home occupations, home industries, agritourism uses and uses that produce value added. The proposal that we're looking at is a value added to the agriculture products produced on this farm and the other farms in the area. And is considered an agritourism, having this experience on farm to enjoy. The, the, the foods produced in this area. So the final one is about compatibility. The, the proposal doesn't change the character of the farm as it is today to a great degree. And the indoor and outdoor dining facilities are somewhat distant from other uses in the area. And from the road and will be implemented also through a zoning by law amendment that follows this application. For official plan amendment. I'm bringing up the site again to, to orient ourselves and provide the context that we need for looking at this. The text, the specific text of this official plan amendment. The current official plan. Doesn't specify that food, retailing and dining experiences are contemplated in the. What has been outlined as a secondary farm occupation. So they are, as they are contemplated by the on farm diverse diversified uses policies that are offered by the province. This, this amendment is looking to establish those specific uses as permitted. And then offer a specific parameter of four hundred square meters to any of the permanent structures associated with this on farm diversified use. So it's a site specific amendment. And it outlines the parameters for this on farm diversified use so that it can expand and expand to a set degree. Which maintains that agricultural. Use of the property and that this on farm diversified use is secondary in nature. And within those guidelines offered by the province. So that gives you the background and the planning rationale for the recommendation that the department's offering today to, to approve this official plan amendment.
Thank you, Sally, for your report. Counselors, any questions or comments at this time? Counselor.
Through the chair, Sally, I was just wondering about the pedestrian walk. Is that going to be like that you really do have to truly walk or can you use a golf cart? Anybody with accessibility issues? Or can they enter off of the other side road there to shorten the way? Just curious if there wasn't a second entry for those that weren't able, I would think it's a fairly substantial walk.
Yeah, thank you for that question through you, Deputy Warden, to the members of council. This. The idea of walking to the back is aimed at that. Is aimed at where parking is located and making sure that, that it's centered around that retail space, that additional parking isn't needed. That the parking for both of these portions of the on farm diversified use are clustered in a place where. Crop production isn't currently happening. So you'll see in this, or you would have seen, I can bring the sketch up if you'd like. The alternate. So the alternate access actually brings the, the farmers, the people who live on this property into their home. That is located at the back towards the outdoor dining space. And certainly there's a, there's a pathway from the retail store over to that laneway. So it's intended that people will come into the retail store area, park and then make their way to the back. Certainly like the kitchen for the dining that produces the food is at the retail store. So there is going to be probably a golf cart or something along those lines that brings materials back and forth. And could certainly assist with any mobility issues at the time. This is a, the reason that it's pedestrian and that that's the intention is to keep that parking up at the front. But it doesn't preclude them from assisting people to get to the back. I, I, I'm looking at this experience, this on farm dining experience, and I think the walk is meant to be part of the, part of the experience.
Thank you, Sally. Any other questions or comments for Sally? I am seeing none. Or no more. Council, we do have a resolution that council receives the Perth County Official Plan Amendment number two, one, four, dash Lynn River Farms. Report for lands described as concession two, part lot twenty-nine, S R P forty-four, R one, zero, six, five. Part two to part four, northeast Hope Ward. Twenty-five, twenty-nine, line thirty-seven, township of Perth East and. That council approved the official plan amendment two, one, four to the county of Perth official plan, move by. Counselor McDermott, second by, Counselor Trentowski. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on to eight point. Two point two, Sally, you're up again.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. This application is, is a, is about a modification to a subdivision. This is a very technical modification. Doesn't change the nature of the subdivision, the layout, the phasing, any of those important aspects. This is really about a conversation between M T O, Ministry of Transportation and the developer. And the conditions that were established in two thousand and twenty-two to implement M T O's requirements and needs. That there be a turning lane on the highway at such point that this subdivision reaches its one hundred and ninth unit and any subsequent units. And when those conditions were established back in two thousand and twenty-two. The conversation between these two parties and with the county was to ensure that the. Turning lane was put in at the right time and that there was an agreement between the developer and M T O for all of the. Design financial responsibilities and can, and actual construction of that, of that. What transpired. In the meantime is that phase two of this subdivision includes. Lots up to the hundred and eighth unit or hundred and ninth unit and beyond, so that, that turning lane is going to be required about halfway through this particular phase. And as the developer and M T O work through that agreement and the designing phase of that. Turning lane. The way the conditions were worded prevented the registration of the phase. Because the agreement itself was meant to be wholly completed before the phase was registered. And so what's happening is that the, the first set of homes that are not affected by the turning lane are being. Delayed in a sense because they're, they're working through that agreement portion now. So we work together with M T O and the developer and they have come to know each other better and I think communicating better as well. Around each other's needs and timing and, and responsibilities of each party. And so there was agreement between those two parties to modify these conditions once again. To facilitate the registration of that phase two. While maintaining the need for agreements and construction of that. A turning lane before the hundred and ninth unit. So through the use of a holding zone on the area containing the hundred and ninth unit and beyond. We've come to this place where. These two parties can agree, all the needs for the turning lane can be met. And the housing units between the seventy-five that are currently registered and one hundred and nine can be registered and continue. Through to the building permit process. So that's what this boils down to, it's rewording of these conditions between M T O and this developer. To facilitate registration of phase two. So I offered a track changes version of the. Conditions on this subdivision so that you could see exactly what was changing and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you for the report, Sally. Council, any questions or comments for Sally at this time? Seeing none, council, I do have a resolution. That council receives the modification of conditions to draft plan approval, N P eighteen dash zero, three, Dolmitch Holdings Limited. Course regarding lands described as part of lots four and five, register plan number two, five, five and part lot sixteen. Concession aid Alma, municipality of North Perth and. That council approved the modifications to the draft plan approval conditions. May I have a mover? Move by Counselor Kaisenberg, second by Counselor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Sally. Moving on our agenda, eight point three, corporate services, December twenty twenty-two forestry inspectors report, I believe Tyler, you're taking that away.
I am. So through, through the deputy warden, council, before council is the December twenty-two, twenty twenty-two forestry inspector report. Prepared by Marvin Smith, the Perth County Forestry Inspector. Within the month of December, Marvin Smith completed eleven inspections, a mission of notes and ten. And one inspection in response to a request from a landowner. Any questions, I'd be happy to take those back to Marvin. Just let me know.
Great. Questions for Tyler regarding the report? Seeing none, council, I do have a resolution that council receives the December twenty twenty-two forestry inspectors report for information, move by. Counselor Orr, second by. Counselor McDermott, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Tyler. Moving on, eight point three point two, Perth County Weed Report, and I believe Sean, you're taking that on.
I am. Thank you, Deputy Warden Callum, through you to council. This is Marvin Smith's annual weed inspectors report. And provides an overview of his enforcement activities pursuant to the weed control act and this falls under our forestry portfolio. For two thousand and twenty-two, Mr. Smith investigated fifteen complaints, which is a decrease of four from last year. And issued one work order, which is an increase of one from last year. And just wanted to point out that Mr. Smith is very complimentary of the weed control efforts made by our county and lower tier road staff. As only one complaint was received regarding weed problems on our county and area roadsides. This report is before council, however, if there are any questions from Mr. Smith, I will be happy to forward them along.
Thank you, Sean. Council, questions or comments for Sean? Counselor McKenzie?
We. Hear about the. Gosh, trying to think of the name of the weed.
Ragged bides.
No. What I'm thinking of is fleabane and it's not a noxious weed, but it's beginning to be a problem. And in certain areas, like, and it does just take right over and it seems to be really taking over in recent years. We have the option, if I remember right, that we could add something to our list in Perth County if we wanted to, like, I believe double beef was added. Years ago, it's not a provincial, on the provincial list, but it is on our list, I believe. Am I dreaming and technical here?
Thank you. Through the, through the chair, you're asking us to look into whether or not we can add a particular weed so that Mr. Smith can follow up on those?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's maybe just a unique problem to the West Perth area, I'm not sure, but it, in our areas, it does seem to be. Becoming a really issue to. Under control.
Through the chair, we're happy to follow up with that. Move your report back.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Otis. Any other questions, council? Seeing none, we do have a resolution that Perth County receives the Perth County Weed Report, two thousand and twenty-two report for information. Move by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Smith. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thanks, Sean. Flew ninety point three point three, corporate services update, and Lori, you're taking this up.
Thank you. Thank you through the chair. This is simply an information report on activities in corporate services. The report comes to you four times a year. Annette Diamond, our Director of Legal and Corporate Services is off today, so I told her I would just speak to the report and if there are any questions. Certainly I'm happy to pass those along to her for follow up.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions or comments for Lori at this time to take back? I see none. Council, we do have a resolution that the council receives the legal corporate services, December twenty twenty-two. Update report, move by. Counselor Orr, second by, Counselor Duncan, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Lori. At that time, eight point four, for the budget, we're reviewing the capital budget presentation. Have two, and I believe Cory, you're starting off with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Callum and council. I do have a brief presentation. But just the general framework of, of the budget, capital budget begins on page fifteen of the binder, electronic binder that is located on our public website. Within the binder, you'll note that we break down our assets into categories and those categories do have a ten year continuity of reserves, which hold our. Ten years of capital asset projects and followed by particularly twenty twenty-three project sheets. Which have project descriptions and project justifications within that. Overall, the next slide, Sean. Overall and within our budget summary on page sixteen, seventeen of the budget, we do have fifteen point two million dollars of capital projects. Broken down into thirty-nine. Within that, it's being funded through our other levels of government. Such as the federal gas tax, which is now the Kennedy Community Building Fund. And Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund or the provincial arm and amounting about two point eight million dollars of that. We do note that there's a three and a half million dollars of levy requirements. That is noted in this report as well and up at the top, you'll notice that eight point four million dollars will be funded from reserves. Four million dollars has been identified as to be debt financing with three hundred and twenty thousand estimated to be funded through our interest. Next slide, Sean. The overall long-term capital strategy of the municipality as, as indicated, we, we look at how these things are funded. So again, identified is the sustainable funding from different levels of government. Which we identified through the Community Building Fund and the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. We also utilize capital reserves. These capital reserves are monies that we have put in a way and essentially taxing existing citizens. We look at debt financing and in debt financing, we look at taxing future citizens on, on the fact that we're looking at. Recouping that principal and interest over the period of potentially twenty-five or thirty years. And then we have our investment strategy, which is looked at to maximize our investments and return on capital. Next slide, Sean. This is a summary of our capital reserves. The indication in this is called three, you'll note that the capital levy is projected at three point five, four, five million dollars. Expenditures from the reserves do include capital reserve contributions to our operations. It does include our road capital maintenance, such as cracked ceiling and other maintenance type of activities. And as well as our financing payments for our existing debt that we have. On our facilities of about six hundred thousand and then in principal payments on our fleet lease, which is close to twenty thousand dollars. Capital contributions from other levels have been identified at point seven, one, nine. And included in the contributions from operating and others. The return of the, for interest on the capital reserves is forecasted at four percent. Next slide. Twenty twenty-three, so taxing our existing future citizens, debt financing in relation to the municipalities can occur on, on only our long-term debt. For capital projects, they must balance their budgets in accordance with the legislation and generally can't borrow money to fund our operations. The, this framework exists municipalities by maintaining their long-term financial health. The annual repayment limits, which is identified, the municipal act, municipal act regulates permits a maximum of twenty-five percent of net revenues. To be used to fund principal and interest debt charges. The county of Perth in two thousand and twenty-two paid principal and interest charges of about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand as a percentage of our. Close to twenty-one million as defined under the provincial regulations, this represents three point nine five percent of our total twenty-five percent. Close to twenty one million as defined under the provincial regulations, this represents three point nine five percent of our total twenty five percent. Um. Under the A R L, uh the we need to summarize this amount to allow council. Uh our maximum amount of principal and interest payments that we can utilize in in any given year. Under municipal act, this requires an available confirmation of our debt capacity, which I'll identify on the next slide. Um based on. Uh the table proposed in here, uh the projected amount in relation to the campus uh renovation, which will be talked about. Uh our increase of three point nine five percent would increase to about five point two eight percent. Uh which then would increase our um annual payments and interest of about one point one million dollars. We do still have a remaining uh available limit of one four point one. And to take that into consideration, four point one million dollars uh on a twenty five year six percent. We could uh finance essentially fifty three million dollars annually. Next slide, that is my brief overview of the. Capital budget. Um as we get into the individuals, uh the asset managers of the particular areas will be speaking to their own. Uh capital projects for twenty twenty three, and I believe they have uh brief presentations themselves. So potentially I'll hand it over to uh said IT, which is within the first part of the budgets. Uh the details within the budget binders starts on page eighteen.
Before we do that, Cory, does anyone have any questions or comments for Cory as we move on? See none. Okay, keep going. Good morning, Steve. Welcome.
Morning Deputy Warden. Good morning, council. Uh so I'm just gonna share my screen here for everybody. So technology assets like other assets. Have a limited useful life. And are also subject to usage and age related depreciation. By pushing technology assets past the end of their useful life, we increase the risk of additional service issues and maintenance costs. That would reduce any potential savings associated with extending their life. Potential costs and issues include older hardware assets are more prone to physical breakdowns. Resulting in lost productivity and additional cost to repair. Vendor support for older hardware and software is limited at best and usually comes at a premium cost. I T staff may then have to spend more time and effort supporting and repairing these older assets. Maintaining our technology assets through scheduled replacements is important to ensure our staff have access to stable and reliable systems to perform their duties. While also allowing the corporation to benefit from improved service delivery and cost efficiencies offered by new technologies. I'll now review the technology services capital projects planned for twenty twenty three and I'll I'll pause after each one for any uh comments or questions. So first up is CF zero 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 one fire radio equipment. So the fire radio system is a wireless radio communication system used by the fire services of North Perth, Perth East. West Perth and the town of Saint Mary's to communicate during fire events. The system is made up of equipment owned and operated by each of the fire services. And the backbone communications equipment maintained by a local support provider with clerical administration performed by the county. In twenty twenty two, a project to upgrade the paging and communications equipment located at each of the tower sites was started. The equipment identified for replacement had aged to the point where good system design and maintenance dictated its replacement to ensure continued service levels. So in twenty twenty three, the plan is to complete those equipment upgrades, which will improve system performance and stability. As well as provide new options for future system enhancements. All project work will be completed in collaboration with our local support provider. And the fire chiefs to ensure that all new equipment and system changes will meet everyone's needs now and into the future. Are there any questions for CF zero 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 one?
Council? Seeing none, keep going.
Next is CN zero 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 one network equipment. The purpose of this project is to purchase equipment related to our network infrastructure. Either to replace equipment at the end of its useful life or to meet new requirements that have been identified. Purchases planned for twenty twenty three include replacement projector equipment for two meeting spaces. Uh replacement attendance tracking hardware for paramedic services. And new audio equipment for the courthouse council chambers. The average age of the equipment planned for replacement is over ten years. A portion of the cost of the new audio equipment will be funded from an existing grant that is part of a council chambers upgrades project. The council chambers is a dual purpose space hosting both provincial offenses court. And county council meetings, so the aim is to provide a setup that works for both purposes if possible. Are there any questions for CN zero 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 one?
See none.
C S zero 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 one software licensing. The purpose of this project is to purchase new or replacement software licenses in order to maintain vendor support. Achieve legal compliance or to meet new service requirements. Newer replacement software licenses may be purchased to meet licensing compliance due to increases in staffing levels or changes in job requirements. Provide new service offerings or to improve staff efficiencies. Or to upgrade to the latest versions in order to maintain vendor support or warranty. In twenty twenty three, the plan is to purchase the Windows Server operating system and client access licenses required. For a new server machine also planned for purchase in twenty twenty three. Are there any questions for C S zero 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 one?
See none.
C V zero 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 one server replacements. The purpose of this project is to purchase new server machines to replace those at the end of their useful life, no longer covered by vendor warranty. Or due to new organizational service requirements. Servers are the center of our digital systems, providing access to the applications and resources that staff rely on daily to deliver our services. In twenty twenty three, the plan is to replace one server that is over seven years old. The manufacturer service warranty on that server expired in late twenty twenty two. Are there any questions for C V zero 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 one?
None at this time?
C W zero 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 two EMS tough book replacement. So the purpose of this project is to purchase specialized rugged laptop computers used in the field by paramedic services. To document and transmit patient information and call specifics. Unlike basic laptops, these devices must operate under harsh conditions while providing the durability and reliability needed by our paramedics. In twenty twenty three, the plan is to replace seven rugged laptops. The average age of those laptops to be replaced is over six years. Are there any questions for C W zero 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 two?
See none, Steve.
Okay, and finally is C W zero 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 four workstation replacements. So the purpose of this project is to purchase computers to replace those at the end of their useful life or due to changes in staffing requirements. As equipment ages and new versions of software require more and more resources, we need to ensure staff have access to adequate computer equipment to fulfill their duties. The county currently has over one hundred and five computers in use by staff at all locations. And with a fleet this size and in an effort to minimize the work required to support and maintain it, we try to standardize on a small number of model types. In twenty twenty three, the plan is to purchase ten computers. The units to be replaced are no longer under warranty and have an average age of over seven years. Are there any questions for C W zero 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 one? Sorry, C W zero zero four.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Kasonberg.
Uh thank you, Deputy Warden. Um I just want to sort of go like looking over all of these projects. Um there's references in the notes that we have in the budget to twenty twenty two purchases, so that's that's like last year, right? Um can you just confirm that the work that was projected for last year has been completed and is not being carried over, of course? In an environment where uh we've seen supply chain problems and shortages in in equipment and so forth. Um and and you you know, I I was a little puzzled because the narrative was talking about twenty twenty two, which is kind of. Rearview mirror looking and wanted to be sure I understood what was happening there.
Through you, through you Deputy Warden. Um for purchases for uh individual pieces of equipment, yes, there were some supply chain issues. But everything that was planned for twenty twenty two for computers was achieved. Um the the discussion about the audio equipment for council chambers has been a bit of a lag because of COVID. Uh and because of that as well, the deadline on the funding. Uh purchases has been extended and I'm I I think it's the end of Q three, I'd have to confirm that, but we do have an extension on that. Uh to end at some point in this uh year, so that's one of the projects that sort of lingered and carried on over the the last two years, I believe. Because of the the impacts from COVID and some of the supply chain issues. Um anything else as far as software servers, all of that's uh those projects were completed. There may have been sort of some overages on a few that were sort of related to um additions. That were sort of unplanned, but that that happens with capital projects such as that one. Um and then the paramedics purchases were all eventually uh completed as scheduled.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just as a supplemental then, uh the narrative in a lot of those budget budget project sheets refer to twenty twenty two. And I'm just sort of curious as to whether that was an editing slip or or otherwise. Cause I'm not sure that we often see the previous year's um budget expenditures as focused on. As uh we do in those um those sheets, so I'm just sort of asking the question. Obviously, wanting to know that that work in twenty twenty two that was budgeted is done. And um wondering why the narrative tends to focus on twenty twenty two as opposed to twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Mayor or councillor Kasonberg. I have Cory would like to try me in here.
Yeah, uh through the uh Deputy Warden, um I believe you might be looking at essentially project start dates. Um I think that should say twenty three, not twenty two. Um and and as um. Steve has indicated the one item that is is kind of lagging is the uh ISF money that we have uh received. Which that the uh the province has extended. Um I believe it has to be be um started by December one of this uh year and be uh finished by the end of this year.
And to your question? Thank you. Thank you, Cory. Any other questions for Steve at this time? I'm seeing none. Thank you, Steve.
Through the through the Deputy Warden, uh the next item would then be uh our lengthy public works who does manage. Uh over ninety percent of our assets. Um and again, uh the this would start on page twenty six of the binder. Uh and then they do as well as a presentation. So I'll hand it over to John McCollum.
Thank you. John?
Morning. Thank you, Deputy Warden Kellam, and good morning, council. Uh our presentation today will follow the electronic budget binder, but we do have some slides providing additional information. So our presentation has been placed in your council portal uh under the public works folder. Our capital budget is basically in four parts, bridges and culverts, roads, facilities and fleet. And we'll basically be doing a tag team approach with myself, Bill Wilson and Treasure Bridges uh delivering the presentation. Uh if the deputy warden and council are okay, we will pause after each divisional presentation for questions. At the present, the county's asset portfolio totals approximately two hundred and thirty seven million dollars. Uh over ninety percent of these physical assets are managed by the Public Works Department. Listed here on this slide are our principal capital assets with roads and bridges making up the bulk of the portfolio. A planning for the sustainability of these assets requires a systemic and comprehensive plan. For maintaining, rehabilitating and replacing infrastructure at the total lowest cost of ownership to the corporation. Today's presentation will provide you with some brief high level info with regard to asset management, strategies and impacts to our capital program. However, this will only sort of scratch the surface. But we will be bringing reports this year where we can delve deeper into asset management and topics such as roundabouts. And the road assumption process, two areas that could impact our asset inventory in the coming years. Next slide, please. Bridges and culverts. We have one hundred and twenty four bridge and culvert assets along our county road network that are over a three meter span. Every two years, those structures require condition assessments and evaluations as mandated by the province. They are referred to as O C M inspections and ours to be are to be updated in twenty twenty three. The inspections are to maintain structures in a safe condition, protect and prolong the useful life. And to identify maintenance, repair and rehabilitation needs for our structures. The O C M inspections also provide a bridge condition index or B C I, which informs our asset management plan. And our ten year capital bridge and culvert program. I can't stress enough the importance of having good condition data for asset management. And I'll get into that a little bit more with the roads section. Uh O C M inspections, though, are generally visual assessments and may indicate the need for more in depth and detailed inspections. Uh that's what the work in progress budget is for, uh to do more inspections and engineering prior to it becoming a project. And our two projects in twenty twenty three are good examples of that. Now hand it over to Treasure Bridges, who will go through our ten year continuity schedule. And then to Bill Wilson to go through the uh project details. Next slide.
Yeah, so within each of our capital uh areas for uh assets, we do identify a continuity of uh reserves. Uh essentially in 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 breakdown of of revenues on how this is funded. So within twenty twenty three, you'll note that bridges and culverts, we're looking to levy about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars with uh uh. Our other partners uh paying about five hundred and five in a in a joint project. Uh I believe it's eighty on eighty six. And and the money that we've allocated towards capital in relation to our regional roads uh payments through the city of Trafford. Um to know by twenty thirty two, we're trying to get that eight hundred and forty thousand to about one point one million dollars overall. Which I identified previously.
Next slide.
Next slide. Okay, Sean, um just moving into the project details of the projects included in this year's budget. We will start with um structure number one, three, nine, zero, one, one. Um it is located on Perth Road one thirty nine, kind of northeast of Prospect Hill or the uh the Weyland Line. Um and it goes across the Fish Creek Bridge. It is about a thirty meter span um eye girder bridge, which was constructed in nineteen eighty two. Um it has gone through numerous iterations of O C M inspections. Most recently in twenty twenty one, um where the overall condition rating, as you'll see, is. Is quite good at seventy four. Um however. Some of the elements of that structure um are recommended for rehabilitation. Um following that report, we did uh a further detailed design and investigation. Of that structure um and came up with a real rehabilitation plan. Which is budgeted just over eight hundred thousand dollars. Um that rehabilitation will see that that um that actual. Um bridge deck will be jacked up so that we can. Access the underside along the um diaphragm and girders, you'll see the the lower picture there, it it shows cracking, which is occurring. Um and I think I included some other pictures in the um in the budget package. Um. So that deck would be jacked up, uh those concrete uh repairs would be made to those. Um girders and the bearings would be replaced as well as other. Um concrete concrete repairs to the decktop and the barriers of that structure. Um just want to note um. Traffic control during that operation, we will be able to maintain live. Um single lane traffic during those. Single lane traffic during those repairs. However, there may be, depending on some of the design calculations on there. During the actual jacking operation, we may need to do a full roll closure to facilitate that operation. Limited to probably one day. That's all I have to go through on that one. Sean, if you want to move to our. Next, Bridge and Culvert Project, which takes us up to Perth Line eighty six. This project, we did present council a report, I think, at the the last meeting. Just kind of an update with respect to this project. As I mentioned, it is located on Perth Line eighty six, just west of Perth Road one thirty one or the village of. Tre Lee. It lies within the boundary portion of line eighty six, which creates a boundary between Perth and Wellington Counties. So the project is subject to that boundary agreement, which will see a fifty fifty cost share between the two parties. For these capital improvements. The existing structure is a smaller span concrete box culvert. And we have a design for its replacement, which would be a precast structure. Precast footings as well as precast retaining walls. We're looking at, given that that road is one of the. Or it it is the heavily traveled road within our road network. Trying to. Create this project with as as minimal impact to traffic as we can. Using these precast systems, we are anticipating about a three week construction period. However, we will be required to close the road fully for a duration of those three weeks to facilitate this replacement. Detour routes have been set. And this, this project is actually currently out for public tender. And it has a scheduled tender closing date of next Friday. So we're hoping to return to council with some positive results for this project in the coming weeks. Uh, next slide, Sean. Also, under our Bridging Culvert budget is our small cover replacement project. These are smaller diameter culverts which don't necessarily show up in our OSM inspections. They're generally under three meters in span and can be found on. You know municipal drains or or things of those that type of nature. We haven't identified any particular projects for this year, however. We do know that projects will come up either through. The municipal drain process or through internal staff inspections on some culverts throughout our road network. So we have budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under that project item. And next slide, Sean. And as John mentioned earlier, work in progress for bridges and culverts, fifty thousand dollars budgeted here. And this allows us to fund some projects for further. Investigation work or design work for upcoming bridge and culvert projects. That will be included in the capital budget in the following years, one to three years sort of timeframe. And it's it's it allows us to do preapproval work and as I mentioned, for detailed design. And inspections so that we can have projects as close to shovel ready for for upcoming budgets as we can. And that concludes the bridge and culvert portion of the project. And we'll just pause here if there's any questions from council on any of those four items.
Thank you. Council, any questions for either Bill or John? I'm seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, Sean. Onto roads. In twenty twenty two, our consultant completed a road needs study. Which provides a condition rating on all sections of our road network. This study is done every two years and informs our asset management plan and ten year capital roads budget. Similar to our OSM inspections, we have had the same consultant or individual perform a road needs study for over a decade. As stated before, it's imperative that you have good condition data. It's also important that the data collection methods are consistent and measurable. This provides confidence in the data to benchmark and better measure the success and strategy of the strategies of your and your program. Our road needs study indicates our road network has a system adequacy of seventy seven point eight. Or an average pavement condition of sixty four point five. This is an appropriate condition for an upper tier municipalities road network. However, that condition rating or system adequacy is slowly trending downward over the last few iterations of our road needs studies. Our goal is to change or modify strategies and the program to stabilize the average pavement condition. And potentially increase the system adequacy. Strategy changes or modifications can take many years to see overall results or benefits to the program. Historically, our program has been mainly cold in place recycling and one lift of new hot mix. With that, we look for a twenty year lifespan for the road. I'm not saying the strategy is wrong, but historically on and on average. We have beginning about eighteen years of lifespan on our roadways. I'll draw your attention to the graph at the top right of the slide. Where pavement condition is in the Y axis and is plotted versus lifespan in years on the X axis. This is a typical deterioration curve for for an asphalt road. And typically, a road will remain in excellent, good to fair condition over the first seventy five percent of its lifespan. However, once it starts to deteriorate, it does so very quickly. And this is typical for most assets. What this graph is indicating is that there's a better return on investment in doing treatments or pavement preservation techniques. Earlier on in the asset's life cycle, rather than full construction on a road that is in poor condition. Simply put, the strategy is keep your good roads good. So over the next ten years, you will see us focus more on preservation techniques or basic hot mix overlays. With the goal of maintaining or increasing our system adequacy. There will likely be a perception issue with that. There's always people who have the mindset, why are you doing work on a on a good looking road? And that is sometimes difficult to to understand. But that is, that is the strategy is to keep your good roads good. Whereas there are some people who think it should be. Worst first and in in this industry, that is not an acceptable strategy. With with that, we'll go to the next slide. And this is just indicating that our rec our next road needs study is planned for twenty twenty four. And just letting council know that during the pandemic, we paused our traffic count program. But are looking to update all traffic counts for all of our roadways in twenty twenty three. A traffic volume data also informs our asset management plan and certainly road classifications. Our capital roads budget is impacted by increasing construction material costs. And we are also seeing challenges with locally sourced aggregate material. But more importantly, we saw dramatic increases in the asphalt cement index in twenty twenty two. And when hot mixed asphalt is the largest part of your project, this does have a big impact. As an example, the chart on the right hand side, in July of twenty twenty. AC was at seven hundred and five dollars per tone. And two years later in July of twenty twenty two, it had almost doubled at four near to fourteen hundred dollars per tone. Historically, if you look at the chart, we see a variance either annually or year to year. Of about a hundred to two hundred dollars per tone. So what we saw in twenty twenty two. We've always kind of. Said that the AC market is volatile. I think we're going to have to come up with a new adjective after twenty twenty two. I'll now turn it over to Cory to go through the ten year continuity schedule for roads. And then on to Bill again to go over our road projects.
Thanks, John. The just briefly within this ten year continuity. To identify that we do break out the couriers projects. But within the resurfacing line, we we're trying to figure out what the program looks like on an annual basis of work to be done. And to do so, what is required as a capital levy requirement. So we're requesting about two point five five million this year for roads. But as you can indicate on the blue line, we're trying to get to about three point six million to cover that infrastructure gap that we do have. That is all I have. I'm going to switch it over and pass it over to Bill.
Okay, next slide there, Sean. Thank you. Okay, so our first capital road project proposed within this year's budget is Perth Line seventy two. East, which is from Perth Road one twenty one. Easterly out to Road one sixteen, which is the. The boundary, I guess, at that point between Perth and Waterloo region. This road section, it goes through Millbank. There's about two kilometers of of the project that are more of a semi urban cross section, meaning that it's built up on both sides. So Line seventy two, it was last reconstructed in nineteen ninety eight. So we're about twenty five years old, so it has performed reasonably well. However, it's it's conditioned today is is in the poor category. It's condition index ranges between twenty five and thirty five. And there there's, you know, severe longitudinal cracking oxidation and and that sort of thing being experienced on this road. It's the 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 full project limit is just over two kilometers. And the proposed rehabilitation for this would be a hundred millimeter cold in place recycled. Followed by a fifty five millimeter lift of of surface asphalt. As well through this this urbanized built up area. The shoulders are paved and we will look to replace like for like on the shoulders. And then as we move easterly on this project around the curve. We will be looking to introduce some paved asphalt shoulders through that section there as well. This project's budgeted just over five hundred thousand dollars at five hundred and thirty two thousand. Next slide, Sean. So moving up to the north and Perth Line ninety three, which is a boundary road. Between Palmerston and Tibet Dale, again, a boundary between Perth and Wellington Counties. This section of road is is maintained and operated by Wellington County. Through the terms of the boundary agreement that we have with them. So they will be taking the lead of this project. And they had recently undertaken a pavement rehabilitation. Report which was completed by third party consulting services. And recommended the replacement or reconstruction method. Which is proposed to be a hundred and twenty millimeter recycle. So slightly deeper deeper than what we are proposing on seventy two. And then capped with a fifty mil hot mix asphalt surface. And also some, again, some partially paved shoulders throughout the project limits. And the overall length of the project is just under seven kilometers at six point seven. However, the portion of the project that's actually subject to the boundary agreement is about five point seven kilometers. So we will be looking to fund fifty percent of this project for those. Five point seven kilometers. Just a couple other points to note about Perth Line ninety three. It's it's it sees about three thousand vehicles per day and the percent truck traffic is. I would say on the the upper end of of the scale of of where we normally see truck traffic. So that just means there's there is quite a bit of truck traffic up there using this road section as well. I think that covers off this project. If we could move on, Sean. Perth Road one twenty one. So again, we're back in the Millbank area. This project would go from Perth Mine seventy two southerly to Perth Road one nineteen. It's a little over eight kilometers. Mostly rural road cross section. We do have some semi urban environment through. The portion of the project that will go through Pool as well as the south end of Millbank. It's it's kind of a continuation of some work that has occurred in this area over the last two years. Last year, we did bridge rehabilitations on two structures, one in Millbank, one just north of Pool. And the year prior to that, Perth Road one twenty one was reconstructed from seventy two. Northerly up to eighty six. This road is about twenty years old, last reconstructed in two thousand and three. Its existing condition now has a condition rating of thirty five to forty. Again, translating to a poor road surface. As you can see from the the images here, lots of alligator cracking, transverse longitudinal cracking. Particularly the intersection at seventy two. We need to do some some work there, but again, throughout its entirety. There is poorer conditions throughout. Again, our scope for this reconstruction project would be. A hundred millimeter cold in place recycle, again, followed by a fifty five milliliter or millimeter, sorry, hot mix overlay. And some drainage improvements and some tree removals throughout the project limits. This project is budgeted at one point nine five million. And I will move on to the next one, Sean. Which is Perth Line forty four. This project's budgeted at two million dollars and the project limits would be from Perth Road one. Sorry, that should be Perth Road one thirty five to Perth Road one nineteen. It's about eight kilometers long. This road was last reconstructed in the early nineteen nineties, nineteen ninety three, so it has performed. Very well over those thirty years. However, it is at a point of. You know, where it has deteriorated to its condition today. Perth Line forty four in its entirety would run from one nineteen. Westerly to the Huron County Boundary at Perth Road one eighty. We are proposing in our forecast to reconstruct this road in its entirety over the next three years. Beginning this year with this first stage from one nineteen out to one thirty five. Which is the Sebringville Road. Again, same constructions, scope and method with a hundred mil recycle. And a surface lift of fifty five millimeters of asphalt. And also some. Roadside environment improvements such as drainage and tree removal. And. For actually for all those proposed projects there. Traffic control will be rolling lane closures through the construction zone, not planning any full roll closures to facilitate this construction work. Can move on to the next project.
This is our Connect Plus radio system. This is a recent addition to our budget and you will not find it in your budget binder and not listed on the current ten year continuity schedule. Uh, the history of this, uh, back in two thousand and eight, it was a county-wide project for radio communications. This system is primarily used for the county and lower-tier public works departments for our daily work communications. Uh, the system does have some interoperability with our local fire departments and paramedic services, having a few radio units so that all the public works departments, fire and paramedic services has a means of communicating with each other during an emergency. Uh, unfortunately, this system is end of life in two thousand and twenty-three, and we are currently exploring two options. Uh, one is a new system that is very similar to what we currently have. Uh, but comes at a greater cost of around two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, just for the county radio units alone, we're looking at about fifty K. Uh, the benefits of this new system are reliability and vendor control, so for maintenance of the infrastructure. But the other option is a little cheaper, coming in around seventy-five thousand. Uh, but it uses some new technology or LTE technology uh, which relies on the use of network towers from telecoms such as Bell and Rogers. Uh, we need to do a little more research into this particular option, just to confirm the reliability and ensure that we can get to maintenance of the net- network infrastructure. Uh, obviously, we won't have as much control, or our vendor will not have as much control with this particular option. Um, the local public works leads have been informed that this system is going end of life, and we need to discuss how to best move this forward. Uh, we are currently budgeting two hundred and seventy-five thousand for for an entire new system. Uh, but what we need to do is more research and discussions with uh, public works, IT, the CEMC, fire and paramedic services. Uh, then we need to bring you back a report to recommend an option and some costing scenarios for all the part- parties involved. And next slide, Sean. I'll turn it back over to Bill.
Okay, thanks, John. Um, similar to uh, the the Bridge and Culvert budget, we do include a work-in-progress item um, for the roads, budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, this just provides fun uh, uh, funds for us to do any pre-engineering or design work. Um, surveys, anything that may be required to plan future capital projects. And once those capital projects um become a project, then these funds are allocated to them um, as far as asset management uh, purposes, so. So again, twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for work in progress. And next slide, Sean. And this slide here is a five-year forecast of where our roads program will be taking us over the the next five years. Um, it's included or it's provided for council on the portal there if if it's not showing up too well here, but it does list the the road sections and the limits that are included in our forecast. It doesn't get into detail um, as far as uh, construction methods. Um, but as John alluded to earlier, um, I can note a few of these that will be um, a little bit different in terms of how our capital construction. Um, this year, we are still doing a lot of recycle and repave. The coming years, there are projects identified in here where we'll be doing more um, asphalt overlays and and things of that nature, so. And that concludes the roads portion of the uh, budget presentation, so again, if there's any, any questions on those slides or projects.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions for either Bill or John? Seeing none. Thank you.
Next slide, Sean. Thank you. Moving on to facilities division. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, we had a consultant perform a facilities condition study for all of our buildings. This provides a facility condition index to various components of the facility and informs our asset management plan and ten-year capital facilities budget. On average, the annual capital maintenance cost to maintain our buildings is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, however, this bud- this year's budget is uh, is quite high, it's about five point eight million. Uh, but that includes two major projects, the completion of the courthouse elevator and the five Huron Reno and connecting link condition. Those two projects alone represent about five million of the five point eight million budget. And next slide. Corey, do you wanna handle the
Yeah.
Anything for here for the ten-year continuity?
Yeah, so just to uh, to council's a- a- awareness again is how we generate uh, money can be put into the reserve for any capital maintenance uh, of our facilities is that we charge internal rents to our uh, services and that those internal rents uh, cover the operational costs as well as our capital renewal costs. And uh, those will be identified within the particular uh, facility budgets as well as identified as operational costs under the other services. Uh, but essentially, overall, we're generating about half a million dollars to be set aside to uh, maintain our facilities in good repair. Next slide.
Thank you, Corey. First project is the courthouse elevator, and this is sort of a carryover or continuation of the project from two thousand and twenty-two. Um, Elgin Contracting and Restoration Limited are the contractors on this project. Construction began in about May and has been a little bit slow going. You see a a picture there from around uh, Christmas time where we do have the elevator pit poured and everything like that. Just received pictures this morning that the concrete block elevator shaft is is on the way. Uh, we have made it up to the second level of the building and they just cut the floor out, so we're we're on our way up. Um. Upon completion, the newly installed elevator will certainly provide access to all levels of the courthouse. And as well, we'll be uh, doing a universal accessible washroom on the second level of the building. Uh, this project will improve customer service accessibility and security of the courthouse building. Um, we budgeted for two thousand and twenty-three is is about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, next slide, Sean. Thank you. We have Archives Capital Maintenance, budgeted is about fif- fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, this is for the reconditioning of three wooden doors. Uh, two of them you can see at the front entrance in the picture there. Uh, I'm not exactly sure where these doors and mechanisms were designed and manufactured. Uh, but not very conducive or suitable for our climate and conditions here in Perth County. Uh, we've seen some deterioration of them and the mechanisms that are located in the floor of the of the front entrance. Uh, we need to recondition these doors and that will require their removal to do so. So temporary doors or an entrance will be needed to facilitate this project. And budgeted for rest- door restoration is fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, next slide, please. A courthouse capital maintenance. So we have a budget here of four hundred and forty-eight, five hun- and five hundred dollars. Um. Hundred and forty is budgeted for a generator replacement. Uh, this generator, uh, will, I'll be bringing you a report in the next month here for that generator. This generator is to power both the courthouse and five Huron. Um, and we have a hundred and forty thousand budgeted for that. Uh, there are some items here, thirty-five thousand for upgrades to council chambers, which includes flooring and window coverings. Um, five hundred fifty-four thousand for a security wall on the second level. That's through an ISIM grant. And ten thousand for replacement of carpeting of flooring on the third level and main staircase. Uh, also being carried over into two thousand and twenty-three is a hundred thousand dollars to refinish and replace three sets of the main exterior doors. As well, uh, they have, uh, we need some work on the uh, steps and and en- stone arches and entrances of of the facility, um, and that's budgeted at a hundred thousand. And just under ten thousand for the replacement of one ductless split AC unit. Uh, I'll just note that, yes, a number of these projects are a carryover from two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and we will care uh, continue to do so. Uh, what we're trying to indicate here is, we've obviously had some delays, certainly with the elevator project in doing some of these, some of these other uh, uh, maintenance projects like, like the entrance doors and the and the entrances themselves, the stone entrances, so uh, once that elevator project is complete, we will look if we're, we have a good window of opportunity to get at that project. We will do so this year. If not, we will be carrying that money back over into the budget for two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide, Sean. Paramedic Services HQ, we have budgeted here five thousand five hundred dollars. And that is for the removal and replacement of a concrete slab that's at one of the entrances out back. Uh, we, we had a similar situation over at Archives the other year, which we replaced in uh, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, similar situation here where we're continually having to grind down that front entrance in order for the door to open and things like that, so uh, fifty-five hundred to redo the front that entrance. Next slide. We have the paramedic services Listowel base, sixteen thousand budgeted there, ten thousand is for security cameras. Uh, you will see that this is a continuation of our security camera program. Um, believe the paramedic services bases are all budgeted for two thousand and twenty-three and will basically conclude our security camera program. So ten, ten grand for Listowel Base, also three grand to replace the carbon monoxide sensor system in that building. And along with the eye washer shower station that we can see the picture of in the lower right corner. Uh, most of these units uh, require repairs and this particular model and parts for it are no longer available, so uh, these, these units were installed at all of our paramedic services bases uh, uh, a number of years ago, and you will see that that'll be common in all the budgets for two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide, please. Paramedic Services Milverton Base. So we have twenty thousand five hundred budgeted for this location. At ten thousand dollars is again for security cameras. We have thirty-five hundred for the replacement of the existing water softener and water conditioning system. Again, uh, um, three thousand for the eye washer shower station and also four thousand for a privacy fence at the back of the building. Next slide. Paramedic Services Mitchell Base, thirteen thousand is budgeted for two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, ten thousand for security cameras and three thousand for the eye wash shower station. Next slide. Paramedic Services St. Mary's Base, seventeen thousand five hundred budgeted for two thousand and twenty-three. Ten thousand for security cameras, three thousand for eye wash shower station and forty-five hundred budgeted to upgrade the lights at this location to LED fixtures. Next slide. Public Works Milverton, um, seventy-five hundred budgeted for this location. We have a number of man doors leading into the shop there. Um, they have deteriorated significantly. They were scheduled for replacement in two thousand and twenty-seven, but because of the conditions up there, uh, with salt and uh, and a number of other things, the water's not great up there either. We're on a well. Uh, we need to replace our entrance exit man doors and the frames there. Uh, seventy-five hundred budgeted for that. Next slide. Public Works Mitchell, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand is budgeted for this location. The bulk of that, a hundred and twenty thousand is for structural and exterior shingle repairs to our sand dome in Mitchell. Uh, this building holds all of our winter sand for this location and the county utilizes it and also the municipality of West Perth. We also have budgeted seven thousand for inspection and repairs to our water cistern and water softening system. Uh, just to note with that, uh, we capture precipitation from the roof of our facility there and direct it to the cistern, and we use that for our wash bay to wash our vehicles and equipment. Next slide. Public Works Stratford, budgeted is twenty-seven thousand. Uh, we have ten thousand to fund the ductless split replacement. That's an air conditioning unit uh, in that building. Um, we also have ten K to replace the overhead door motors at that location and seven thousand to upgrade the light fixtures to LED. Next slide. Uh, courthouse campus. So we have a project budget of four million dollars. And this is the renovation to five Huron and the construction of a connecting link condition between the courthouse and five Huron. Um, of course, we d- did all the design work and are looking to to wrap that up. Um, I just received an email yesterday to organize the final design meeting on February the eighth. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, we did a contractor pre-qualification where we've qualified eight contractors that will proceed to the construction tender phase. Uh, we currently have out right now an RFP for project management services for this project. And we'll close that on February third, I believe it is, third or the seventh. Um, we have direction from council to proceed to tender for construction. Um, once we wrap up the final design and have the drawings ready for permit and and tender, we will be putting out that construction tender and we're hoping uh, that will be in late February. Uh, following that, so we'll be bringing those results back to council, um, and if approved, constructing in two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide. Uh, Public Works Facility Vehicle Access, this is ten thousand dollars budgeted to upgrade and provide a universal remote to control all of our overhead doors at our public works yards located in Mitchell, Stratford and Milverton. Next slide. And then annually, we have a miscellaneous furniture replacement. We budget twenty-four thousand dollars for furniture replacements that are at our various facilities around the county. Uh, this is an annual project and act- actual expenditures vary from year to year just based on need. And lastly, work in progress. Twenty-five thousand is budgeted uh, for future capital projects that require engineering con- consultation or works in preparation of a project. An example of this is in two thousand and twenty-two, we had a consultant prepare a study and loading requirements for the generator project planned for this year. And that concludes our facility division capital budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Council, any questions for either Bill or John? The last slides that they presented, excuse me. I am seeing none, so.
Right on. We will move on to.
Yes, uh, let's cut you off, and I think being mindful of everyone's time that we will uh, pause uh, at that point and then carry on the presentation, uh, we will be at the next meeting, at the next meeting, if that's okay with everyone. Okay. Thank you, you three, for your presentation, and we'll continue on the next meeting. Okay, council, so I do have a resolution in front of me that council receives the two thousand and twenty-three capital budget presentations. Move by. Council McDermott, second by. Council Mackenzie, all those in favor? And that is carried. Item nine, council reports. Are there any council reports that council wishes to receive? Seeing none, moving on to bylaws. Bylaws, we do have a bylaw from the Lynn River presentation that we had earlier. Seeing none, moving on to bylaws, bylaws, we do have a bylaw from the Lynn River presentation that we had earlier. And the resolution reads as follows. That bylaw, thirty-nine twelve, two oh two-three, be read a first, second and third time. Finally passed this twenty-sixth day of January, twenty twenty-three, move by. Councilor Kesenberg, second by, Councilor Trentowski, all those in favor? And that is carried. Council, are there any notice of motions that you'd like to bring forward? Seeing none, other business? Any other business you'd like to bring forward? Seeing one again. Any announcements that would better Perth County you'd like to bring forward this time? Seeing that again. We do not have a closed session. So we will move on. That we have now been through most of our agenda, which brings us to what we call the confirmatory bylaw. And the resol- resolution reads as follows, that bylaw thirty-nine thirteen, twenty twenty-three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. On the Corporation of County of Perth at its regular meeting held January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Is read a first, second and third time, and finally passed January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, move by. Councilor Orr, second by, Councilor Duncan, all those in favor? And that is carried. And finally, a bylaw, thirty-nine thirteen, twenty twenty-three, being a bylaw. Whoa, I think we just did that one, I had it twice, thank you, how about we adjourn this meeting? Sorry about that. In front of me, I have a resolution that says, uh, the council meeting be adjourned at approximately twelve twenty-two PM, move by. Councilor Smith, second by, Councilor McDermott, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you, everyone.